I'd like to call the May 19th, 2022 meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge. Got a couple of announcements. If you are using the county's parking facility or use public transit to attend the meeting this evening, you can get validation for your parking or for your transit pass from one of the sheriff's officers who was with us this evening. You can see them on the way out. Going to read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the Board at our meeting this evening. Commissioners, we come to the consent agenda. Are there any items, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Are there, do any members of the public have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion, Commissioners, to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we now come to public comment. We have a list of folks that have signed up. And I will go through the list, and then if there's anybody else who didn't sign up who would like to speak, you'll, we'll have an opportunity for that as well. Everyone gets three minutes to speak to the Board. You'll get an orange light when you've got about 20 seconds left and a red light when your time's up. And we do ask that you wrap up your comments once your time's up because we want to give everyone the same amount of time. Board members are not expected to comment during the public comment period. This is a chance for the community to speak to the Board. And the first person that signed up is Stephen Fazio.
Good evening. I've worked for Buncombe County since 2005 for the library system. And in that time, I can tell you, I've heard lots of things. People that work in a library have an easy job. That couldn't be further from the truth. I've watched through the years as the staff has worked ceaselessly to plan events, help the children, share their knowledge. They have a passion to, to help everyone. And we have never been so close to having just compensation for our services. And I just wanted to bring that to let you know how hard they work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on the list is Chris Kingsley.
I am a bus driver and a instructional assistant at Hominy Valley Elementary School. And I wanted to talk to you about the wages that we have. It is impossible to live on our currently hourly wage. I've worked at several schools and I have not met a single hourly employee at any school I've ever worked at who doesn't either have a second job to make the ends meet or live off the income of a spouse, a loved one, a roommate, something like that. It is, it can't be done, not here, not with the way the prices of things are going up right now. There are other jobs available in this area that pay far, far more and require far less. Instructional assistants in every elementary school except for Glen Arden, I believe, require a two-year associate's degree because they're all Title I schools. You can work at Target and make more, and you don't need an associate's degree. And if somebody pees their pants at Target, you don't have to help them clean it up. They just leave. I saw the recycling truck job that pays $50,000 a year, and it requires less of a license than what is required for a school bus driver because it doesn't need the passenger endorsement or the school bus driver endorsement. $50,000 a year to me is a wild fantasy. It might as well be $50 billion a year. It's something that I feel would never be attainable to me, the way things are currently going with the wages in our county. And so, of course, it would be irresponsible of me to my family to not look for other opportunities like that. And I'm not the only one. This staff shortage that we're talking about, it's not speculation. It's not something that's coming. It's not in the distance. It's happening now. There are no bus drivers. I have, there's three buses at Hominy Valley. Every single one has had at least one day where it sat parked, and those kids didn't get to school that day because there was nobody to pick them up. Because there's nobody to fill in when we can't make it in. I gave two months' advance notice for a sick day, and I still had to come in, not a sick day, it was a vacation day, and I still had to come in on that day. Two months' advance notice and drive in the morning because there's nobody to do it. There was a full week where I was sick, and I had to come in and drive in the morning and then take the middle of the day off to try to rest during cover, and then come in and drive in the afternoon because there's just not anybody else to do it. And other people are leaving, and we're not getting them back. They're not being replaced. We have two assistants that I know of that aren't going to be at Hominy next year, and I cannot imagine that anybody would want to come and replace them. Who would? Who would? Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Next is Vicky Meath.
Hello, I'm Vicky Meath. I'm the Director of Just Economics. I'm here tonight to advocate for a wage floor of $17.70 an hour for the dedicated public servants employed by the county and the local school systems. Just Economics is recognized as a national leader on living wages and have set a wage floor of $17.70 an hour as a more just minimum than the minimum wage. Our numbers are based on the cost of housing, and we all know how housing has risen drastically in our community and has even continued to rise since we published our 2022 living wage rate of $17.70 in January. We believe that all workers deserve to earn enough to put a roof over their head and food on their table. And with skyrocketing housing and historic inflation, we know this is harder and harder for employees to make ends meet. I understand the difficult job you all have in managing our public budget, especially during these challenging times. But I ask you to make the same commitment that hundreds of local living wage certified employers have made to pay our public servants a living wage of $17.70 an hour. Thank you.
Thanks, Vicky. Next is Brian McKeon. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Commissioners, for taking the time to listen and consider the many requests you have received here today. My name is Brian McKeon. I am a teacher for Buncombe County Schools. I'm also the treasurer-elect for Buncombe County Association of Educators. As you may know, the state of education in North Carolina has been at a tipping point, and it may be considered to be in crisis. School staff and teachers are at the breaking point. With less and less resources, staff have been doing more and more. Especially following the COVID pandemic, students and staff are struggling to return to normalcy and to support our students through learning loss and mental health issues such as stress and trauma brought on by the pandemic. The current system, as it is funded, is simply not sustainable for the staff who feed, transport, teach, and keep our students safe and our buildings clean. At my school, we have had difficulty in finding staff to fill vacant positions, and the rate of staff leaving education is alarming. Those that are leaving are not just beginning teachers or one-year staff, but instead vested veterans of the education system that simply cannot make ends meet anymore. These vacancies have put greater strain on the staff that have remained and are working for near-poverty wages. This puts a greater strain on the teachers and creates a poor learning environment for our students, our children. You, as a commission, as a commission, are now facing the difficult task and opportunity on deciding on a budget for the county. This is an important and vital activity of the Buncombe County Commissioners. You are choosing where the county will invest its resources and in doing so, choosing the priorities of our community. So I ask you, where are our priorities in our community? Where do we invest in our future? Your school systems are begging for more funding at the local level because politicians in Raleigh continue to defund public education. Do not look at this request from your school system as a cost. It is an investment. And by prioritizing the schools in our area, you are investing in our children and our community's future. Our children deserve the best education available, and without the local community coming together to fund our schools, we cannot recruit and retain the best talent and the most skilled employees to serve our children. And don't we want that as a community? Don't our children deserve that? Thank you for your time and your consideration to increase the funding for Buncombe County Schools and to make our schools a priority for our community.
Thanks, Brian. Next is Cassandra Cumming.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Cassandra Cumming, and I'm a librarian in Buncombe County. I'm here this evening to share personal stories about how librarians can no longer afford to live in Asheville. After teaching for 15 years, most of those years spent in Buncombe County schools, I got a master's degree in library science to vary my career path. I was hired by Buncombe County as a children's librarian, and I love my job, but my salary has become completely unsustainable. I had no idea what a drastic pay cut it would be to work through my local government compared to working through the school system, which didn't pay well to begin with. And since my hire date, I have had to take on multiple side jobs to pay for my basic needs. I tutor, babysit, pet sit, and have now had to rent out my home in order to make all of my ends meet, and all of this is in addition to working full-time in the library system. I am not alone in my financial stress. A fellow Youth Services colleague who has been in the system for seven years said, "I've been in my home that I helped build through mountain housing opportunities since the fall of 2018. My loan has a term of 33 years, low interest, and a subsidized monthly mortgage payment based on my income, which is still below 80% of the area median income. Despite all of the extra support, I still struggle to pay my bills. My mortgage and basic utilities alone are at least 60% of my income. I have sought out government assistance via EBT and other programs but didn't qualify, and I have no expendable income and rely on my credit card anytime any unexpected expense comes up." Getting a second part-time job for her on top of her full-time job would cause her mortgage to increase hundreds of dollars each month, likely forcing her to work a second job indefinitely. A manager who's worked for Buncombe County Libraries for six years said, "I'm a branch manager and a bartender. My husband runs his own business. We live paycheck to paycheck and treat ourselves rarely. We can't enjoy the town we live in because it costs more than we make to live in it. Librarians are hard workers and passionate employees but don't feel appreciated, recognized, or respected. Most people don't even know what we do on a daily basis. Many of us wait in line for free food boxes in order to eat. We struggle to keep up with student loans and other bills." A librarian who's been in the system for over 30 years said, "It has become increasingly difficult to achieve a living wage here in Buncombe County in the last 10 to 15 years. Unless you have other significant income coming into your household, it would be impossible to survive alone on a Buncombe County library salary. This is evidenced by statistics from pay equity studies showing how shockingly far below state and national wages we are for librarians in other county positions. Librarians are full of workers who love their jobs. We didn't take on a library career to get rich. We work in our helping profession because we care about people, culture, and accessibility. However, we need more. Morale is low, pay is low, and eventually, we're going to fizzle out if change doesn't happen. Please consider all of this when voting tonight. Thank you."
Thank you. Next is Lisa Peterson.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lisa Peterson, and thank you for everyone showing up. I am a school teacher in the Buncombe County School System. I have been teaching since 2005. When I got out of graduate school, I made a lot more money in the state where I was working than I would ever make in North Carolina. Normally, I advocate for everyone, but right now, I'm advocating for the classified positions. People have been saying, you know, it's not a living wage. I have to tell you, I talked to a friend of mine who works in the classified position at my school. She's been there for 21 years, and I was joking with her because we're about the same age, and I'm like, "You gave your youth to this system." She's like, "Yes, I have." She makes, she doesn't clear $1,000 after two weeks, full-time, not $1,000. After they take out her insurance and her everything else, she clears just over $600 for two weeks. I just need to put those numbers on there so you can actually hear what, what it means to struggle. Now, it makes people who work with children feel like we're being taken advantage of for our care and our love for children. That's why we went into it, and it should be a benefit, a perk, not something that, you know, is guilting us to keep up, to stay in a position that we can't afford our lives. I am a single parent. I can't imagine if I was a classified single parent. It wouldn't happen. I'm working over the summer because my son needs to have a root canal. I can't imagine if I was working and making less, a total of $1,200 in a month. How? I mean, honestly, how? I'm ashamed. It hurts my heart that people we ask to work with our children. I mean, it's not just working with our children. We, we care for them. We talk to them. We, we work through problems with them. Everything's increased because of the pandemic, and the epidemic has put on our children and the stress. We, they function as counselors. They function as parents, in lieu of parents, when they're at our school. They do so much, and they're bringing home $1,200 a month. And I'm just, I, I, I could go on, but I'm not. I think that makes the point. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alexandra Duncan.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Alexandra Duncan. I've worked for Buncombe County Public Libraries for 14 years. As you've heard, our department, Libraries, is one of the lowest paid in the county, with most employees making 11 to 50. As you've heard, our department, Libraries, is one of the lowest paid in the county, with most employees making eleven to fifteen dollars an hour. The reasons for this range from decades of neglect at a local level to national trends that suppress pay in all of the helping professions, including teachers and librarians. More difficult to grasp, though, are the fundamental misunderstandings about our work that are used to minimize the difficulty of our jobs and contribute to low pay and chronic understaffing. Being a librarian is more than a job. It is a vocation. And in the library, we are more than books. We help people apply for jobs, find housing, connect to emergency resources, find tax and legal forms, and vote. We teach people about technology, support early literacy for children, provide cultural and informational programs, create educational materials, and support local authors, musicians, and artists. We collaborate with other government agencies and nonprofits to connect people in our community to the services they need. We may make this look easy, but that doesn't mean that it is. We work hard to cultivate a sense of peace, safety, and fun so many people feel when entering our spaces. Being a librarian can be hard, physically and psychologically. I have been in physical therapy multiple times for chronic pain from a shoulder injury. I am threatened, yelled at, insulted, and sexually harassed, as many people in frontline service work are. I help people navigate issues such as domestic violence, mental health, and homelessness. I mediate disputes between patrons and deescalate situations which can and do become violent. I'm trained to administer Narcan and safely dispose of needles because the opioid epidemic has hung heavy over our work for years now. Library staff have also endured two years on the front lines of public service during COVID. We pitched in to work at food distribution centers, the 911 Call Center, the Vaccine Clinic, the Emergency Operations Center, in addition to maintaining library services. While doing that, we had to fight to get appropriate PPE and access to vaccines. We watched our friends, colleagues, and family members get sick. Some of them died. Through all of this, we came to work every day and tried to hang on while people vented their stress and trauma on us. Many of us have reached a breaking point. I have colleagues who can no longer afford housing, who go to food banks to feed themselves, who work multiple jobs to make ends meet. I know stellar librarians who have left the county because they could not live under these conditions. Two of the seven staff at my library resigned this week to seek better opportunities elsewhere, and we have another position left unfilled since February.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Timothy Wallace.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Wallace, and for full disclosure, I am married to a county employee. Since I also have a job, we have not had the hardships some other county employees have had, but we have seen them firsthand. This past October, the county moved to change the COLA increase every year from Will to May and also changed the increase date from April to July. On top of this, in the first year of rampant inflation, 2021, the county changed the formula to look back two years and divide the resulting increase by two. This means that instead of a 7.81% increase this past April, they may get a 4.69% increase in July, all to cover inflation that happened all the way back to 2020. Since the time period for this increase last year ended in December 2020, we need to look at inflation since then. Cumulatively, right now, it is at 12%. That bears repeating. Right now, since the last raise was calculated, we have had 12% inflation. By the time the possible 4.69% increase happens in July, that number will more than likely be 15%. Also in the county are departments with employees paid well below the scale of their position in this state. This impacts them not only now, but also in retirement as this salary level is the basis for state pension, 401K, and Social Security. This is actually a lifetime problem. I have watched the budget work sections and heard that this is being addressed. We will obviously need to see it. I noted the county website has a pictorial called the County Organization Chart. The salary of almost half of these staff is over the midpoint for their grade, a majority of them with less than five years' service with the county. The average for this group overall is 30% above the minimum for their pay grade, and taking out the one-fifth with over twenty years seniority, the average term of service is less than five years with the county. In closing, I analyzed the entirety of county staffing by average pay and pay grade, and the inequities were glaring. You're talking about putting in place a new method of addressing salaries. I have been speaking to you all about this for four years. And looking at the one department I know so well, if the right logical moves are made, a month from now, we may have a totally different outlook from some of these people. As you would expect, I will be analyzing the new structures that may result from this meeting to see if they do address these inequities. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, thank you. Don Yelton. Maureen Smathers.
Good evening. I work for Buncombe County Schools. I work in the Technology Department, and I am a field tech. I wanted to tell you something really quick. This is what I do on average every day. Repair laptops, repair desktops, set up iPads, set up MacBooks, work through software issues, software smartboard issues, troubleshoot projectors, help with account issues so they can get into their computer to take attendance, teachers, figure out why a computer isn't hitting a network, figure out why an entire class is not hitting a network, try and help the engineers figure out why an entire school doesn't have internet. We set up Zscaler on phones for people that aren't even employed by Buncombe County Schools. We set up desktops. We reimaged not hundreds, but thousands of computers. We learn new software, teach, and teach the basics to the teachers so the BLCs can come behind us and teach the teachers everything. Basic printer issues, troubleshooting, knowing when to discard a computer, explain why any cable cannot be run from one side of the room to another, explain why a cable cannot go up through the ceiling, across, and back down to the floor. We set up phone software for administrators and teachers. We set up standalone printers, and we're also guinea pigs for software, Windows updates, and whatnot. That's just touching the surface, and it's not just me. There's eighteen field techs. You have an entire department that has fifty to sixty employees. My team leader, I've been employed with Buncombe County Schools for fourteen years, I believe. My team leader has been employed with Buncombe County Schools for sixteen years. She just got her first raise. It was twenty-six cents an hour. Let me repeat that. My team leader that has been employed with Buncombe County Schools for sixteen years just got her first raise. It was twenty-six dollars, uh, twenty-six cents an hour. Twenty-six cents. We're not just asking, I'm begging, literally. I wanted to, I got thirty seconds. I wanted to use a word, and empathy is the word. Is that the right word? So I Googled it because I'm a tech. Empathy is the word I want all of you to please have for us. There's three types. Cognitive, simply knowing how the other person feels and what they may be thinking. I've done told you that. Emotional, when you feel the physical along with the other person, and their emotions are contagious. Please, no, we're begging. And please let me finish. Compassionate.
Your time is up. Please stop speaking. Your time is up. Please stop. Please stop. Sit down, or you're going to have to leave the room. Thank you. Melanie Allen.
I'm Melanie Allen, and I work for Buncombe County Schools in Technology also. I am at the central office, so I support the field techs, Maureen, and all them. I deal mainly with iPads and Macs. We have eight thousand iPads out there in the schools right now and four hundred and forty-five Macs. The PCs are in the twenty thousand or thirty thousand more. We work hard every day. I have been with the system for twenty-six years. The last raise I got was fifty cents. It's hard on us. We struggle. We work. We do other jobs to try to just live. I just ask you guys to look at our plight and vote and help us to do better. Our morale is low. We have people leaving. We have positions all across our department that can't be filled. Nobody wants to work for starting pay of fourteen dollars an hour. The state, they think one percent raise here or there would be okay. That's less than fifty cents. We can't survive on that. As a department, as a school system, we support these kids. We help these kids to thrive, to be able to learn and take an iPad home or take a computer home when COVID hit. We were there. We kept all these devices running. We were doing Help Desk 24/7, just about. We had to just cut our phones off because parents would call. They were like, "We can't do this. Help us." And we would. We would have them bring them by. We would meet them at the door. We would do what we could to keep these kids going. And sometimes it feels like we're working for nothing, but we love our jobs. We love the county. We love our students. We just want to be able to survive. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the next people who signed up may be in the overflow room. Joan Hoffman. Okay. And then after Joan, Laura Edmonds and Mary Jacob. And that's everyone that's signed up. But if anyone would like to speak who hasn't signed up, we'll be given a chance as well. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Joan Hoffman. I'm the upcoming Secretary for Buncombe County Association of Educators. I've worked in Buncombe County Schools since 2005, and I have children in Buncombe County Schools as well. A lot of these people who have talked before me have already made a lot of my points, so I'm going to tell you my points from this week. On Tuesday night at 7:00 PM, I received a text message from my student's school saying that the bus would not be running the next day, Thursday, and Monday. That is unacceptable. There has been two bus drivers the whole year, and they need four. My kids need to get to school. There are parents in my parenting group who get calls from the school because they don't bring their children to school. They don't have cars, or their husband leaves at five in the morning. They get in trouble for not getting their kid to school. It is our responsibility to provide a free and safe public education. People need to be paid a living wage. I set up my first computer lab with Melanie in 2005, and at the time, my brother, who has the same credentials as Melanie, made three times as much money as she does. And at this point, he probably makes five times what she makes. And she's an awesome human. And Ms. Smathers, I taught both of her kids. These people, we are relying on people and their good graces to work for us, and that time has to be over. They need to be paid a living wage. I had a friend quit today. She wanted to work four more years, and she just couldn't do it. She's moving to Virginia. My custodian has three jobs. She went out on leave because she hurt herself, and we all had to donate leave so she wouldn't go off payroll so she could survive. This happens all the time. It is not safe. My other friend had, her friend was assaulted at school because there wasn't an intervention specialist. And when she told Dr. Baldwin about that, he said there were seven open positions for that same. That means there are seven kids out there who don't have their specialist. That means there's unsafe practices happening. It is not safe when we don't have enough bus drivers. It is not safe when we don't have enough staff. My front office staff, there's been six new people. Training happens once a year. Are those people trained? When they come in over and over every month with all the new safety procedures, how to let people into the building, what to do? Is that happening? I don't know. But kids need to have people there for them. They need that bus driver to say good morning to them. They need that person in the office who loves them. My daughter loves Ms. Peterson at Glen Arden, and she knows her name, and she knows my email, and she calls me. My students deserve that at my school. We cannot continue to depend on retired people coming back to work. That's what's happening right now in my front office. Two people retired, coming back to work for pennies. We need a living wage, and there hasn't been a supplement increase since 2011. What is that about? That is not acceptable.
Thank you. Laura Edmonds.
Hey, y'all. Thanks for having us. Thanks for your service. My name's Laura Edmonds. I have been a public librarian here in Buncombe County for almost twenty-two years. And it's been such a blessing to serve people, whether youth or elder. And I simply had to make it happen to be here. I don't have a lot of energy, even though my voice kind of sounds different with that. However, I decided, like, it's really important for me to just be super real and let you know I haven't had a day off in a month because the way things have shifted, especially with gas, I've had to pick up other jobs. I mean, I've always had a couple side things. I'm a fire dancer with Unifier Theater. I sometimes do childcare, but now I am cleaning houses. So I simply just needed to look at each of y'all and with kindness and compassion and ask you to actually go back to what that awesome field tech got cut off from saying is that we have cognitive empathy and emotional empathy, and she got cut off right at compassion. And I implore you to be compassionate in how you decide where money goes because it's obvious. It's not just the library. It's not just the school system. I'm sure every, like, county employee or most of us is struggling. And I go to the food bank. I have to take my lunch break and go get in the line. So I just want y'all to know that. I come from a long line of people who serve. My mother was a first-grade teacher for forty-five years, and one of my first memories was being on the picket line with her down in Charleston, South Carolina in 1979. So I'm here because I was taught right, and I hope you do the right thing for us. Thanks, y'all.
All right, thank you. Mary Jacob.
Good afternoon. I am Mary Jacob. I am the LEA Coordinator for Buncombe County Schools. As you all know, we have forty-five schools, and I oversee the data for each of the schools and the non-border schools for Buncombe County. I have data managers at those schools that I oversee, and they have asked me to be a voice for them this evening. Our data managers in the elementary, right now, let me clarify this. There are around forty-two data managers. We have one school that doesn't even have a data manager at this time. Because, as everyone has said, and I don't, I'm not going to repeat because I think you're hearing and you're listening, there's not anyone applying. And there's, you know, and it's been very sad. Now, of course, my office and myself, we take care of the schools, and we help them in any way they can. I do want you to know that our elementary data managers and our intermediate data managers, they start out, which has been a huge turnover this year, at a level fifty-seven. A fifty-seven is a twelve-dollar-eighty-eight cent an hour pay. My middle schools and my high schools' data managers, they are a level fifty-nine, and they start out at thirteen dollars and sixty cents. And most of them have stayed at this wage for a long time. I'm just pleading to you tonight to please take into consideration, you have what everyone has said, and I just pray that for our students and our staffs, because our data managers, as she brought up our Glen Arden data manager, they're not only the data people. They are the nurse. They are there when a child is sick. They help them with their EpiPens. They give out medicines. They also are out in the bus lines, helping kids- They also are out in the bus lines, helping kids get on the buses. They are the people on the security. They're helping to see that, that people are safe coming, coming into the schools are not going to be a, a problem. They, they do anything and everything to, because they love their jobs, and they are there for the children. And so, once again, I do thank you for your time, and I do appreciate that you will take this into consideration, and I pray that you make the right decision in giving a, a good salary wage for them. Thank you again.
All right, thank you. All right, that, uh, so everyone that's on the list that's signed up, um, are there others who would like to speak to the board during public comment? You were, you were done. I called on you earlier, but go ahead.
Well, if you speak plain, I can hear you. I'm sorry. I'm getting old. You're going to recognize me down on the agenda a little bit later on. I see you recognizing older Americans. That makes me proud. I sit here and I listen, and I listen, and I listen, and I listen. And I've been coming up here and listening for thirty-five years. You don't accomplish nothing. When you sit up there, can't talk to you, you can't answer, they got three minutes to say their piece, and you send them down. You just about broke your gavel a minute ago. Now, I'm telling you, folks, where you're headed. They're going to be floating a seventy million dollar bond that's going to be paid for by taxes. So you know where that money's going to come from? You think you got it hard now? They're expecting gas to go, diesel probably go to ten dollars a gallon. When it gets to ten dollars a gallon, what's going to happen to you groceries? If you check and see your school board, you got a pretty good raise this year, much bigger than you per hour. Figure it out. Now, what's going to happen? They're going to float the seventy million dollar bond. You're going to pay for it with taxes. Then they've had a meeting this past week where they do everything, you know, with Zoom and all that stuff, which doesn't work for learning. You all know that. And they're talking about the reappraisal process. They're going to take a house and reappraise it based at its actual resale value. They're going to come around and look at everybody's house, and if you and your husband got married and bought a small house and finished out the basement, now they're going to up the price of the basement. And what's the price of real estate doing in Buncombe County right now? It's doubling. So your taxes are going to double. You think you got it hard now? That's where you're headed. I can tell you, I've been here for thirty-five years. I'm looking around, seeing some people don't like what I'm saying. Well, you can just like it or lump it, because you know what they're going to do? Oh, we will reevaluate, and we'll cut your rate from fifty-three cents a hundred down to thirty-five cents a hundred, when they actually double the amount, and they'll still have more money to spend on trails and buying up. And there's a statement that I saw that they made. They want to take twenty percent of the land in Buncombe County and take it out of production. Now, what's that going to do to the price of housing? Hey, you don't know what to think, do you? Because these, we elect these people, folks. Vote the same way you've been voting, and you're going to have what you got. Change the way you vote, and you might get something different that's open and transparent and will tell you the truth. That's what we need, somebody to tell you the truth and expose the numbers. But that's not going to happen yet until enough of you come up here on a regular basis. And that's what we need to do, and that's what you folks need to do.
Thank you. Who else would be, like to address the board? Amy? And then you can go next.
Hey there. Thanks for letting me jump in and speak. Um, I did not come prepared, so this will be, this will be interesting. Um, but I am a girl from Georgia, and if y'all know any Georgia girls, when there's a really good conversation going on, you're part of it. So, um, I just wanted to say, first of all, it's a little aggravated that I had to go to the overflow room at first until I said, "Hold it. I'm in the overflow room because people are here to speak up and advocate for themselves." And I hope that as a board member, you know, that I, I would take the time to come up and acknowledge that they did take time to, out of their schedules. And I, and I speak for the other board members that, you know, were not able to be here or did not get a chance to sign up to speak too. But, um, you know, so, so we have a packed room, and you've heard, and you've heard a lot. And, you know, these are, these are real stories, and I think the money that we're talking about is pass-through money. So this is money that you put into our employees' pockets, but then it goes back out into community. And yes, it may go back out for gas, and, but it will also go out to some of our restaurants. Um, you know, maybe spending a little bit more at our mom and pop shops. Um, you know, there'll be more discretionary spending. And I think that would be good for us as a county and a city, to have people that work here be able to afford to live here and afford to shop here and to actually be really a part of Buncombe County. So, um, I wanted to thank Commissioner Sloan for taking the time to speak with me when he first got some of the information from Dr. Baldwin and the, um, study. And that's not to say that the rest of y'all didn't. I just, um, unfortunately didn't have a lot of time. I was out of town. And so, um, Commissioner Sloan was the first person I, first and only one I was able to get to, so that was on me. But, um, I am really looking forward to the opportunity to, um, work with all of y'all to right this wrong. And I'll take my responsibility as a, a board member for Buncombe County Schools. We should have been looking at this, but we've been dealing with some budget crisis for years, as y'all know. And I think we were just kind of praying and hoping that we'd be able to get by. Well, I think the paper mentioned a tsunami, and here, and here we are. But I know where y'all are, what y'all would like to see, you know, for, for our employees, and I'm really looking forward to working with y'all to, to help achieve this goal. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Amy. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Donna Justice, and I appreciate y'all listening to me tonight. I work at, um, in Buncombe County Schools. I work at Lester Elementary. I'm EC Assistant, and we, um, have to work really hard at our job. We do duties that, for our own duties plus everybody else's, because nobody wants to work. I know y'all have heard this. I've been there for seventeen, I'll be finishing my seventeenth year in October, and I'm not even making, I'm just now making thirteen dollars an hour. And I had to have Associate's Degree and all that to get there, and I love my job. I've loved working with the EC stands for Exceptional Child, and it's special needs kids, kids that have learning disabilities. I've been beat, hit, tripped, cussed at, I mean, you, you name it, but I still love my job, and I still get up every morning and go. But I would ask y'all, please, if y'all could, some way and somehow, if there are any way that y'all could give all the assistants and teachers and all the ones that work in Buncombe County a pay raise, it would be very helpful. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? All right. Well, we appreciate everyone who took time to come out and speak to the board this evening, and, um, thank you very much for being with us and addressing these important issues in our community. All right. The next item under, on our, on our agenda under Good News is the Governor's Volunteer Service Award, and Jennifer Abilius is here to present this. Thank you for being with us, Jennifer.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, the Governor's Volunteer Service Award honors the true spirit of volunteerism by recognizing individuals, groups, businesses that make a significant contribution to this community, community through volunteer services. The award program created by the Office of the Governor in nineteen seventy-nine recognizes North Carolina most dedicated volunteers through the years. This award has honored thousands who have shown concern and compassion for their neighbors by volunteering in their own, their local community. Buncombe County began accepting nominations for the two thousand and twenty-two Governor's Volunteer Service Award in January, and on April twenty-eighth, we receive all winners for our county. And we would like to take a moment and properly acknowledge them, since they are often without reward or recognition for the integral work for the community, offering their time and energy to important causes. This year's Volunteers Service Awards for Buncombe County goes to Lynn Leader. Um, Lynn Leader for being for, uh, part of Manas Food Bank Food Access and Support Team Helpline, which assists individuals in western North Carolina with federal SNAP. Lynn is one of the veteran volunteers who helped build the helpline program and has served as helpline application assister for the last eight years, where she guides clients facing financial crisis through the SNAP application process step by step. Lynn is friendly and easy to talk, and she goes the extra mile for every client. Thank you, Lynn. James Stilwell? I'm so sorry, James. I thought I was prepared. Better prepared. Okay. Have a chance. We got you. Thank you so much. James Stilwell for his commitment of service for the veterans at our Western North Carolina VA Healthcare System. He distinguished himself immediately as a volunteer filled with passion, excitement for our veterans. Mr. Stilwell seeks new and innovative ways to meet the needs of our veterans. His commitment to our veterans during the pandemic is showcased by his pledge to provide veterans opportunities of healing through art. Jim has also created online workshops for our veterans, being served through our Community Living Center and Mental Health Program. Thank you, James. Edith Walker unfortunately is not here with us today. She will be receiving hers by mail. But for, she has been a volunteer for the Arberneethie UMC Bear Closet Baby Equipment and Resources. This community faith-based mission has been operating for a number of years as a drop-in services for women and children, providing needed supplies to families of young children. Um, our next award winner is Hannah Sobleski. Hannah is the founder and president of Home for Black Cats. They specialize in saving cats and kittens and advocating for the rights to a happy, healthy forever home. They offer rescue and TNR services in Buncombe County area. They work with a rescuer to increase their impact and educate the public on public cat statistics and how they can help their cause. Their mission is to spread the magic of black cat and foster a community that loves and protects them. Thank you. And finally, Dr. Greg Lentz. Dr. Greg's leadership skills with Hearts of Hands, a disaster response organization located in Buncombe County. Hearts with Hands has responded to disasters by providing mass feeding and a huge variety of supplies and disasters across the country. Notably, the organization has responded to hurricanes in eastern North Carolina, as well as to the recent flooding in western North Carolina. Dr. Lentz, he stepped up to the job hosting daily coordination calls for volunteer agencies participating in the disasters. His preparation was impressive. He opened the calls with complete and comprehensive situation briefing. He listened to the agency's report and made sure that every agency had the resource they needed. For their great volunteering work, we want to say thank you and recognize you for your effort and everything you have provided to our community. Thank you.
Can the volunteers come forward and just grab a picture? Okay. Stand in front of the Commissioners if you don't mind.
The lighting is terrible. All right, thank you, Jennifer, and congratulations to all of the folks who are recognized for their great work. All right, uh, next we have a couple of different presentations. Uh, the first one is a proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and Commissioner Sloan will read the proclamation. And I think Rachel Edens is here to address this item as well. Thanks for being with us.
Okay, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, whereas Buncombe County is committed to reflecting the concerns and needs of the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities, and whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month seeks to honor and recognize the contributions of Pacific Islanders, East Asians, South Asians, Southeast Asians, and West Asians, and whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have played a significant role in America's history with their enormous contributions to science, arts, industry, government, and commerce, and whereas traders from the Asia-Pacific region reached North America as early as the sixteenth century, but the first significant wave of immigration began during the late eighteen hundreds. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month originated in a congressional bill in June of nineteen seventy-seven, on March twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-nine, President Carter issued Presidential Proclamation four, six, five, zero, proclaiming the week beginning of May fourth of nineteen seventy-nine as Asian Pacific American Heritage Week. And whereas the month of May was selected as it, as it honors the immigration of the first Japanese residents to the United States in eighteen forty-three. And whereas while May also marks the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in eighteen sixty-nine, constructed by the labor of mostly Chinese immigrants, we recognize Chinese laborers were paid lower wages than their peers, white peers, and some faced physical abuse from their supervisors. And whereas the population of people who identify as Asian or Pacific Islander in Buncombe County is just, is just shy of two percent, the artistic, culinary, and educational contributions are immeasurable. And whereas we are also aware of and deeply concerned about the dramatic increase in the violent and hateful crimes of, and incidents targeted at AAPI communities during the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And whereas through our values of respect, integrity, collaboration, honesty, and equity, we honor AAPI individuals and stand in solidarity with the AAPI community as we work to dismantle systemic racism. And whereas a vast diverse, a vast diversity of languages, religions, and cultural traditions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders strengthens the fabric of American society and our Buncombe County community. Now, therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners proclaims May twenty-twenty-two to be Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month and urges our community to join together in celebrating our residents of Asian and Pacific Island heritage and in making this commitment to the principles of justice and equality for all people.
Thank you, Commissioner Sloan, and thank you, board. Um, it's my pleasure this evening to, to receive this proclamation. But before I go further with any other comments, um, I will ask you all to join me for a brief moment of silence in recognition for the loss of life of three Korean-American women in Dallas last week. Thank you, everyone. Um, again, it is my pleasure to receive this proclamation, particularly as the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities comprise a full hemisphere of our world, and noting how incredibly deep their roots run in our American history. It is absolutely wonderful to see this proclamation being made, particularly when, unfortunately, our Asian American Pacific Islander population in the county is so low that we can recognize their high, incredible, deep-running contributions to all sectors of our community by giving this proclamation. So it is, it is a pleasure. As always, I thank you, and I think the entire community for making this commitment.
All right, thank you, Rachel. All right, the next proclamation is Recognizing Older Americans Month, and Commissioner Al Whitesides will present this proclamation, and Stoney Blevins is here to receive it.
What a better way to celebrate it than to have two old men up here. County of Buncombe proclamation, Older Americans Month. Whereas Buncombe County is, is home to more than 75,000 older Americans over the age of 60 who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported. And whereas the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners and partner agencies recognize our need to create a community that provides the services and supports older Americans need to thrive and live independently, independently for as long as possible. And whereas Buncombe County can work to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, ensuring activities are responsive to individual needs and preferences, and increasing access to services that support aging in place. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 2022 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to recognize the contributions of our older neighbors, help to create an inclusive society, and join efforts to support older Americans' choices about how they age in their communities. Brownie Newman, Chair, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. I just want to take a minute to recognize and be honestly be grateful for folks that work in this area every day. We have an amazing group of aging providers in Buncombe County that make up what's called the BOSA, the Buncombe Aging Services Alliance. And um, I'm amazed at their dedication every day to show up and really provide wonderful services to our, to our aging community. I also feel very grateful for the staff at Buncombe County, Adult and Aging Services under the direction of Jen Teague. Again, incredible dedication, leaders in this field in Western North Carolina. And I'd really be remiss not to thank you as our public body. So I appreciate you recognizing older Americans. I appreciate your long history of supporting these services. You were pioneers in helping Buncombe County to become in the early process of being named as an age-friendly community. Also, you have a long track record of supporting and enhancing the federal aging dollars so that we can provide much-needed support to our aging partners. And finally, I applaud you for your vision to include active aging and strong aging and aging in place as a part of the Buncombe County Strategic Plan. And I just want you to know the HHS stands ready to partner with you in those efforts in the years to come as our population continues to grow in this demographic. And I'd just like to close with a quote from the, the late and great Betty White. She said, "Some people fret and say, 'I'm gonna be 30, what am I gonna do?'" Well, use that decade. Use them all. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Stoney. All right, the next item on our agenda is a presentation on the Comprehensive Plan Phase Two Analysis and Phase Three rollout. And Jillian Phillips and Nathan Pennington from our Planning Department are here to present this item.
Cassie, could you pull up the presentation? Or someone, whoever pulls up the presentation? Okay, there we go. Good evening, Commissioners. I am here to talk to you, talk to you about the process, progress for the comp plan, where we are with Phase Two and where we're going with Phase Three. So just to remind you, we've completed Phase One. Phase Two was a tad bit longer because we'd extended it due to COVID because we wanted to have those in-person meetings. Phase Three will begin in late spring and continue out to fall of this year. And then Phase Four, which is where the Planning Board starts their work and where the Board of Commissioners start their work, will start in fall 2022. And you guys can take as long as you want. We're gonna try to get it done by spring 2023 though. So just to remind you, Phase Two was our vision and goals phase. It is currently in progress. We've assessed existing conditions, that's complete. We've held our first input opportunity, which was our vision and goals, and that's complete. And where we are now is the Steering Committee is helping us develop that plane framework and vision and goals. And they just had a really long meeting in May where they worked on that. And we'll bring it back to them in June and they'll work on it a little more. So Phase Two, we had some great participation. We had about 1,300 people complete a portion or all of the activities. We had 347 people attend meetings. We're really proud. We had 592 kids participate in some way. We had 127 stakeholder surveys submitted. We had 1,300 community engagement, participate in the Community Engagement Word Cloud. And we had 20 meetings and events. So what staff learned during this Phase Two input opportunity is the majority of people chose to engage online through public input. And what the consultant feedback has been telling us is they've been telling us that that's a trend that started prior to COVID and has continued through COVID. We found that intercept events proved to be a good opportunity for, for people to engage in the process. So those are really short events where we go where people are. There's a picture of our intern, Griffin, at UNCA trying to get students to engage with us regarding the comp plan. We did, we did a great job with outreach. Cape and community engagement really helped us with that. But we, we want to target on some geographic areas and some of our communities that we feel we didn't get enough input on in the next phase. So like I said, the, the consultants and staff and the Steering Committee are busy looking at that data from that first community, from that first input window. And that closed April 22nd. And so I'm just gonna give you a snapshot of preliminary data. So you guys sort of get an idea of where it's going, but it's definitely not the whole picture. So just three questions from our survey and some answers. What do you like most about Buncombe County? Residents said they liked the natural environment and the people the most. Those are the two most prolific answers. What's your biggest transportation needs wants? Better access to sidewalks, walking trails, and greenways? What should be the county's priority for creating a more sustainable future for its people and businesses? Support the development of housing affordable for all residents and local workers. So the consultants are busy taking the more, taking the, the data from the residents that's specific to each residence. When we asked them specifically, specifically about what, what we wanted them to address or what policies and actions they wanted the board to take and sort of the themes that have come out of that, but this isn't all the themes. Again, this is just snapshot. Equity, housing, governance, infrastructure, community health, environmental protection, transportation, and sustainable development. And then deeper into those themes, there's some more specific ideas or policy directions or issues that residents raised. For housing, affordability was a big one. Infrastructure broadband, sustainable development, green design and growth management, and environmental protection, preservation, tree protection, and water protection. So moving on to Phase Three, our first input opportunity. We're gonna give you three options and we'd like feedback on them. And our first input opportunity will be mid-June through the beginning of September. If we follow that schedule, we will have a draft plan probably in November and we will bring it back out to the public for a shorter input opportunity for us to sort of say to the public, this is what you told us in June through September? Did we get it right? So that's when residents would be reviewing the actual draft plan. We'd have a draft plan in hand. So for Option One, which is the staff recommendation, we're gonna, we're gonna propose one all-day drop-in meeting. We're gonna propose as many intercepts as we can do between mid-June and through the beginning of September. We have 14 tentatively scheduled. We're gonna propose two virtual meetings. We're gonna try a text option where you sign up to receive a text message every few days and answer a question for us. And we're gonna try to get posters in public buildings with QR codes so you can scan, go directly to public input, and provide us with that input that way. Again, this would be by county staff. It would be mid-June through the beginning of September and there would be no change to the, the budget. Option Two is sort of all those, all those things and Option One with fewer intercept meetings and five additional drop-in meetings like we had in the last phase. That would also be led by county staff. It would add probably one month to this phase. And again, that'll push out everything else and it may increase the budget. Option Three is 10 additional meetings. That's more like we did it in this phase. We'd need help, so it would be county staff and consultants. And it would add two months to the phase and it probably will increase the budget. So at this point, I'll ask for input regarding that next public input phase and any questions you might have.
Jillian, I've got a question. And I'm sorry if you said, if you said this. Can you roughly describe the difference between the one day, the one all-day drop-in meeting and intercepts?
So the one all-day drop-in meeting will be a specific meeting for the comp plan. We'll do it drop-in style because we found that worked best in the last phase where we'll have stations and people can go through the stations and give us input that way. Intercept events is we go where people are. For example, we've started talking to the farmers markets about setting up a booth at farmers markets. We've started talking to some festivals and sort of events during the summer. Shindig on the Green, Goombe, the Ola Festival, and having a booth there. We're gonna, if that's the way the commissioners want to go, we're gonna reach out to our community centers and say, "Hey, when are you having an event? Let us set up a table." And we'll be there to try to get input that way.
So I'm supportive of Option One. I think that that's a good idea. And based on what I saw during the other round, I think the, having those intercept events and going out into the community is a great idea. And I just, one question about the all-day drop-in meeting. I'd just say if we can have it somewhere that that is easily accessible for people. Just thinking about that, please, with that one day.
I would echo that support for Option One. I echo that as well.
It sounds like there's a lot of support for the recommendation on one.
Okay. Any other questions?
I guess my other questions on this, um, are there gonna be additional opportunities during this, this phase from spring through fall in terms of how the commission can give input on? So this is the phase, I mean, this seems like, like the really substantive part of this whole process, right? Like we've gotten this, this input, big picture vision. And so this is the part where, where there are the specific policies and strategies to implement, you know, what we want to see in terms of new direction in the comp plan. So, um, and obviously our main job really is kind of a policy-setting body. So this is the kind of part where we start to, you know, have, it starts coming back to what we're gonna be interested in. So, um, how do you, what, do you have any thoughts on that or is there a plan on that?
We sure do. So you're right. So the first part is kind of like conducting a trial where both sides conduct discovery. So we had to go out, we had to find out what the issues are, and we largely knew what a lot of the issues are, but you gotta make sure you capture everything. So now we have all that data. Now we start talking goals, objectives, and policies. So here's where the rubber starts meeting the road. In terms of what it looks like, this is our plan. It's up to us. It can look like many different things. Our thoughts were have staff take a stab at crafting some goals, objectives, and policies based on what we know, what we've learned. Then start talking about what does it look like to then have the Steering Committee talk with us as well as the Planning Board and have some inputs from commissioners. In terms of what that structure looks like, I think what we'd probably like to do is put out a few options for you and let you choose what those could look like. And then we all come to a consensus. But you're right, this is the opportunity now. We're getting so close to where we're gonna really start refining those goals, objectives, and policies. And not only just within the silo of this plan, but for all the work we're already doing, say through the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, say through the Environmental Subcommittee. We gotta make sure we capture everything because this is the place to put those long-range goals.
And so, um, and so how do you see that working in terms of like, yeah, the space to do that?
Uh, I think a work session would be an excellent option to accomplish those goals.
That sounds great. You know, cause it's, I mean, this is a comprehensive plan and I'm sure it'll be, you know, there'll be a lot in it, right? But still, any plan can't do everything, right? So at some point, um, I just want to make sure that the different, you know, policy ideas that the commissioners have, there's things in our head, right? And there's stuff in every, you know, in the staff planning set, the head and ideas out there. So I just feel like we kind of need to kind of compare notes, like, you know, based on the public input process so far, you know, here's kind of the preliminary list of policy issues and goals that I think we all want to hear are emerging as focus areas and make sure there's an opportunity for the commissioners to, um, you know, review that. And, you know, if there are things that are on the commissioners' minds that may not be on the list, to be able to just talk that through and, you know, is it, is it possible to look at that or, you know, are some things, you know, at some point, again, you can't do everything in one process, even a comp plan process. But I just, that kind of, I want to have the opportunity, that kind of dialogue around that.
No, that's perfect because the way to think about that too is at least you set a long-range vision and then you can assign timeframes to each thing you're trying to do.
So Commissioners, I'll weigh in and make sure I hear correctly. So I'm hearing two things. We were planning as a staff to bring you some ideas and you can help flesh that out, put some others on the table. But I'm also hearing some upfront planning. So maybe we have an intercept meeting with the commissioners.
We want one. We want one of those.
That's what I think I'm hearing is to do that first and get your ideas on paper, then go out with the other intercepts, bring back that data, and then you can further refine that.
I think that'd be great.
I think you're asking for a front and.
I think, I feel like having one opportunity, kind of in this Phase Three, one opportunity for us to kind of hear the, you know, hear the, the highlights on what the staff are seeing coming out of the first two phases. And, and provide input on, yeah, if there's any goals or policies that don't seem like they're, they're kind of currently spoken to in what the staff are recommending, to have a chance to weigh in on that and say, is there a chance to look at this issue or this policy issue? Is there still space to, you know, to look at that as we go through the, the Phase Three section? Cause I'm worried if we wait till the end of it, then it might be, it might be kind of too late to kind of start raising some things that haven't been getting in the mix at that point. So I think an early check-in opportunity and then of course one towards the back end would be, would be great too.
So I'll just note that that may shift schedules if. Okay.
Yeah. All right. Commissioners, other thoughts or questions for now? Jillian, Nate, anything else we, you want to share with us this evening?
No, that's good direction. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, great job. Look forward to moving, moving forward on it. Great. All right. The next item on the agenda is the FY 2023 Budget Message. And Avril Pender and our budget team are gonna present this item.
Thank you, Commissioner. Perfect.
I appreciate the opportunity to present the recommended budget for fiscal year 2023. Over the last few years, our budgets focused on responding to the pandemic and most recently, recovery from the pandemic. This year, 2022, is Buncombe County's 230th anniversary. As we celebrate this milestone, we turn our focus on the foundation of our organization and our responsibility of stewardship. This budget continues to focus on goals of our strategic plan, which you established in fiscal year 20, as well as the upcoming initiatives that we just talked about from the Comprehensive Plan 2043. To meet these goals, we need, we need to invest in our workforce and the foundational aspects of our organization. We have prepared a budget for fiscal year 23 that focuses and reflects that focus on our foundation while maintaining fiscal responsibilities and continuing to deliver high-quality services. Before we get into the details of the budget, I want to recognize the artwork of some of our employees and their families. In recognition of our 230th anniversary, the Budget Department held an art contest to solicit artwork for the annual budget document from employees and their families to show what does Buncombe County 230th anniversary mean to you. We had seven submittals. I would like to recognize those artists tonight. First is Joyce Canevel. Joyce, would you stand and come up? Melissa Hudson. Terry Rogers. Brad Watt. I'm not sure if Brad was here. I didn't see him. And we had three siblings. So I'm gonna make those little kids come up front because they're kind of bashful. So August, Saoirse, and Cormac, Assen Brenner. Yeah, all right. They're being bashful, but those three. Thank you so much for taking the time to do this. And the winner of the art contest was Joyce Canevel from our Elections Department. She submitted an acrylic pour painting utilizing the colors from her county seal. This painting, as you can see, will be on the cover of our budget and brief document. All the submissions will be used in the annual budget book, and they're also displayed just outside the chamber in the foyer. Thanks again to all of our artists.
All right. Great job.
For fiscal year 23, I am recommending a general fund budget of $399,212,222. The tax rate remains flat at 48.8 cents. Our budget planning spans almost seven months. We begin in December. If a board retreat where you outline top priorities within the strategic plan, the department then takes those priorities and generates requests and initiatives. We've held work sessions as we reviewed and refined those requests. And, and you have also heard from education partners as well as any fire department requesting a tax rate increase. The last two steps in the budget process are a budget public hearing on the recommended budget scheduled for June 7th and adoption anticipated on June 21st. Both held junior regularly scheduled board meetings. The strategic plan for focus community areas and three foundational areas continue to guide our planning as we develop this recommended budget. This year, departments align all expenses to the strategic focus areas. This graph provides the breakdown as to how general fund budget is represented across the community-focused areas as well as the foundational areas. Seventy-nine percent of our budget is invested in our community-focused areas of resident well-being, educated and capable community, vibrant economy, and environmental and energy stewardship. The remaining 21% represents our foundational focus areas of operational excellence, adequate resources, and equity. In our educated and capable community focus area, 194.9 million is, is for our education partners. This represents 6.22% growth for AB Tech, 7.98% for Asheville City Schools, and 11.92% for Buncombe County Schools. In total, this represents a 10.89% increase for our education partners. Our Early Childhood Education and Development Fund is recommended at 3.82 million. This includes a 2% growth required by the Enable Resolution. We're adding $154,788 to create an arts and culture grant and fund infrastructure. To advance our investment in, in environmental and energy stewardship, I'm recommending $1.6 million for alternative fuel vehicles. In addition, in the capital fund, $4 million is budgeted for a new phase of solar on public buildings and $120,000 for electric vehicle charging infrastructure. In our resident well-being focus area, I'm recommending $564,000 in various investments to improve our recreational assets across the county. I'm also recommending $326,000 for additional investment in a community paramedic program as a post-recovery overdose, as a post-overdose response team. That grant is expiring. Additionally, we would invest $125,000 in assessing where ambulance should be located across the county to best respond to those that require emergency response. Vibrant Economy Focus Area honors our obligations to economic development at 4.3 million and continues our support of affordable housing development in our community at $2.3 million. In our foundational focus areas of equity, operational excellence, and resources, I'm recommending 63 new positions across 23 departments. Later this evening, our HR director will present for your consideration the results of an employee compensation study. This budget includes funding the compensation study and associated benefits at $5.1 million. As the Joint Reparation Committee begins their work and we await recommendations, I'm including an allocation of $2 million for reparations. Also included is $658,000 for new information technology needs. I firmly believe that a staff form is the foundation of where we can accomplish, of what we can accomplish. And to that end, I'm recommending 60 general fund positions totaling $4.2 million and three positions in a solid waste enterprise fund at $220,000. In 911 operations, four telecommunications and a quality assurance specialist. In ag and land resources, a soil conservationist. In communications and public engagement, a web, a website administrator as well as two communication specialists. In economic development, administrative coordinator. In diversity, equity, inclusion, two equity and inclusion specialists. In elections, two coordinators. In an emergency services, five paramedics to staff an additional ambulance and emergi- and emergency medical services quality assurance officer, an emergency management specialist, an additional fire marshal, and three community paramedics for the post-overdose response. In finance, a procurement specialist. General services, a project manager. Health and human services, an adult protective services evaluator, an adult and aging coordinator, a housing specialist, an administrative coordinator, an onsite wastewater specialist, and a quality assurance manager. In human resources, four positions to manage compensation, HR information data, employee engagement, and retention. One technician in the ID bureau, two radio special, two radio systems analysts in IT. In justice services, convert two program coordinators who were previously grant-funded to continue veterans and adult treatment courts. In legal and risk and attorney. In our library system, a branch manager at the North Asheville Library, a library specialist, and a part-time cataloguer. In permits and inspections, a code enforcement officer. In planning, a solid, a stormwater technician, a transportation planner, a long-range planner, and a planner in development services. In recreation services, a park ranger and a convergent of a temporary laborer to a regular part-time position. In the sheriff's office, a detective, a forensic technician, and convergent of a previously grant-funded deputy. In strategic partnership, two positions for grant monitoring. In sustainability, a project manager. And last, in the tax assessment, as commercial property appraiser. Moving to the solid waste enterprise fund, an environmental enforcement specialist, a heavy equipment operator, and a maintenance technician. The general fund comparison for fiscal year 2023 can, recommended to fiscal year 2022 amended as of May 11th is a 6% growth in revenues and a 2.7% growth in expenditures and a corresponding reduction in appropriated fund balance. We are estimating the current fiscal year 2022 year-end projected fund balance minimum by policy is $58.3 million. With a 2023 appropriation of $16.9 million in fund balance, we remain 4.3% above the 15% minimum established in policy. So we will be at 4.3% above that minimum by using 16.9 million in fund balance. The general fund revenue budget is adopted by source type. For 2023 revenue budget totals $382.4 million with an appropriated fund balance of $16.9 million for a total amount of $399.2 million. Highlighting our three largest resources, revenue sources. Property tax revenue makes up 63% of the total revenue budget at $240 million. The second-largest source is projected to be sales tax at 12% and an estimated $47 million. Closely behind that is intergovernmental, which represents the third-largest revenue source. 12% or $45.45 million. The general fund expenditure budget is adopted by function. Our expenditure budget totals $399.2 a balanced budget. The largest percent share of the budget supports education. It represents 27% at $109.2 million. Human services is 23% of the budget and totals 91.5. Public safety recommended at $82.7 million. Debt service, 19.1. Economic and physical development, 8.8. Other financing sources, which includes transfers to transportation, capital projects, and special projects, total 10.3. With our education partners, we have established a growth rate in our unrestricted revenues as our target for our increase in funding year over year. For fiscal year 23, that growth rate is 6.22%. For Buncombe County Schools, the 6.22% equates the additional $5 million. However, Buncombe County Schools requested an increase of $23.9 million, which includes funding to pay the non-certified staff $15 an hour as well as other salary adjustments, operating expenses, and replenishment of fund balance. I am recommending an increase of $8.7 million for Buncombe County Schools. This provides funding for locally funded, non-certified staff to bring them to the $15 per hour. It adjusts compression, and it pays salaries for staff previously covered by ESTER federal funds into, that, that covers that as well. I'm also recommending funding one half of the operating expenses and no funding for fund balance replenishment. This local funding for Buncombe County Schools for fiscal year 2020 is $81.9 million. For fiscal year 2023, it'll be $81.9 million. As the county is required to fund schools at the same per pupil expense, funding to Asheville City Schools is based on the average daily membership as a proportional share. This provides an increase of $1.1 million or 7.98% to Asheville City Schools. The general fund allocation for Asheville City Schools is recommended at $15.3 million. I am recommending $7.7 million for AB Tech, which represents a 6.22 unrestricted growth rate. Total funding for schools and AB Tech is $104.9 million. Next, we will review 2023 capital and information technology requests. I am recommending projects to be financed with debt and capital funds by the upcoming fiscal year. The debt-funded projects total $15.26 million. Emergency services-based construction, facility renovations as identified by the Comprehensive Facility Study, and solar on schools and public buildings. For schools to be, for projects to be funded with capital funds, library renovations and repairs, a generator at the Public Safety Training Center, a recreation services master plan, and electric vehicles charging infrastructure. The recommended IT projects totaled $658,000. As we continue to focus on building our foundation, one project I want to highlight is the implementation of continuity of operations planning, or COOP as it is often called. This will assist us in developing a plan to be adequately prepared for disruption of services and identify downtime plans and recovery processes. In reviewing our taxing districts, we received requests for increase to two fire districts and the City of Asheville supplement, City of Asheville Schools supplemental tax. As you can see on the screen, the ones in blue are what was recommended or what was requested. This budget recommends only one increase, that of the Barnersville Tax District from 20 cents to 22 cents per $100 of assessed valuation. All documents associated with the fiscal year 2023 recommended budget and the proposed fee schedule is available with today's agenda. The 2023 Budget Explorer is an online tool the public can use to explore a budget in more detail. The next step is a required public hearing. The public is invited to share input on a recommended budget in person on June 7th at 5:00 PM at your next scheduled meeting. Before I close, I would like to thank, thank our budget director, Jennifer Barnett, for her years of service. As you know, Jennifer is retiring, and today is her last day with us. John Hudson has been selected to be our next budget director. I want to thank them both and the budget team for their work on the fiscal year 2023 budget. And commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to present the recommended budget for fiscal year 2023.
All right. Thank you, Avril. As the county manager just articulated, we've had a process we've been going through. We've had multiple budget work sessions and planning sessions. Tonight's the presentation of the proposed budget from the manager. Next step will be our public hearing at our next meeting. And then, our intention is to then vote at the subsequent county commission meeting on the, on the third Tuesday in June. So this is an important part of the process. And we appreciate all the work the staff have put into this and the county manager's recommendations. But we don't see this as a process that's finished until our final deliberations on this. So we're still gathering information. We're looking at a lot of the issues that have been raised through this budget process. And that process will continue as we move forward over the next 30 days. So commissioners, are there any questions or comments at this time?
I do have a question. As we just continue our dialogue with our education partners, if we have clarification around guidelines for how ESTER funds can be used?
We do not have a final answer on that. I know that they're still working through whether or not it could use for more staffing or to pay salaries. So we will continue to work with our school partners to get a definitive answer on that.
Thank you.
Ronnie, I think before we move away from the budget, we need to officially thank Jennifer Barnett for her years of service as budget director. And Jennifer, we appreciate what you've done. And some of it started with not the best of times. But thanks to you, we survived. And you've made it happen along with Avril and everyone else. But thank you for your years of service. And I don't want us to take that for granted.
All right. Thank you for saying that. Al, we all agree.
Thank you.
Thank you for saying that, Al. Do you?
Her family's waiting for dinner since this is her last night. So she's not just leaving. She has plans.
I guess, Mr. Chairman or Avril, I don't know if this is a question or a comment, but I guess what struck me the most about this budget so far in our communication with the, with our education partners was the Buncombe County Schools salary study. It was just, it was just alarming. I read it again a few days ago and just want to lift that up and recognize that as, I guess, my righting those wrongs, increasing those salaries, helping those people, thanking them for their service too, is I guess what's most important to me and that's what's on my mind today.
Yes, sir. And when Tony Baldwin was here, Superintendent Baldwin was here, he shared with you that they haven't had an increase in 15 years, not had they really requested an increase. We had focused with, along with our state, on teacher pay, more so than outside the classroom. So everyone that said tonight, it is time for us to consider that. And this budget does contemplate that. We have worked with the superintendent and his staff to bring forward the numbers that you see tonight. And we will continue throughout this summer to look at the rest of it. But that, that is on our docket, is absolutely on our docket.
Thank you. And, and just, and this, this is the sort of thing that for a lot of these kind of processes, you know, there's what we can accomplish this year. Some of these things that require moving the needle a lot might take a couple of years, right? I think the consultants with the, that the schools retained, you know, kind of articulated that in the presentation to the school board too, that this is probably a, we probably need to think about going from where we are now to where we want to be, need to be as a, you know, a two or three-year process. And then, of course, it'll, it'll be something that gets looked at every year. But having that plan and coming up together with the schools, working towards a, an agreed-upon plan that we can, we can get there. I'm glad, I'm glad we're focusing on, because I think you're right. I think the, so much of the attention rightly is focused on teacher compensation and things like that. But there, but it takes a much bigger team to run the schools. So it's past time for us to focus on those who have not gotten the support that they, they need to attract and retain good people to our, to our schools. Now, the recommended funding levels in the proposed budget, if allocated for the purposes that you laid out here, would be sufficient to get all the employees to 15, to the $15 an hour compensation level.
Yes, sir.
Right, other questions, commissioners?
I do want to clarify, I said yes, sir, but we are focused in mostly on our locally paid positions. And the state has put in their budget for the state-funded positions. But what's in your budget tonight is around the locally non-certified staff.
So, right, so the state, the state has established the policy that every, the $15 should be the floor for all the, all the personnel. And they are providing the funding to accomplish that for the state-funded school personnel positions. But we have about 20 something percent of the staff are locally funded and we need to provide the funding to get all of those staff to 15. Yep.
Avril, it might be good too, again, to explain what was budgeted for compression so that people will understand what we're talking about.
And then looking at the breakdown that the schools provided, they told us to bring all locally funded positions to $15 an hour or give a 2.5% increase would be $2,248,385. And that is recommended. To address salary compression for locally funded staff is $1,651,816. And that also is recommended.
What I mean, you might explain what compression is. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Maybe I didn't make very clear.
Right, as we move the folks that were below 15 to $15, they're now that much closer to someone that was at 15 or 16. So the monk of funding that we have would to move the first person that was at 15 or 16 to keep that spread the same. So we adjust, we're adjusting the folks that were at 15 to the next level and the ones that were below 15 to that 15 floor. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Commissioners, other questions?
I guess I just want to add, and when we're working with the schools, then we're coming up with a plan so that we're continuing to address this over time. So this does not happen again, right? That's, we clearly need to make sure that this is an ongoing.
Right, and, and we're looking at our pay schedules because the pay schedules are set by the state. So we're looking at how do we keep them from being stagnant? Have they have been for somewhere had 15 years before you got a raise? Then you got from 15 to 18 before you got your next raise. So we're working with our school system to take a look at those salary schedules.
All right, and we appreciate two of our school board members being with us, Pat Bryant and Amy Churchill. Thanks to both of you for being with us this evening and for your work on the school board. We look forward to talking further about all of these issues. And as, you know, following up on the comment and question from, from Jasmine, you know, we are, we are interested in understanding more how the county schools plan to invest the ESRS funding over the next two years. We recognize that that is one-time money. You know, whatever we do in terms of compensation of staff is essentially a perpetual commitment, right? It's a long-term commitment that will only grow. So resources like ESRS are not a long-term solution to that. That will be our responsibility in the long term. But in the context of the request being such a large request, you know, candidly, I mean, it's three or four typical years of budget requests in, in a single year, right? So to think about getting from where we are to where we want to be, even though those are not recurring funds, you know, my sense from the commissioners and talking to the staff is that some combination of increased funding from the county and investment of some of the ESRS funding is probably essential to, you know, to move this forward at a rate that I think we would all like to get to. So we, we know there's lots of rules around that, not, not just any, anything can be automatically funded. So those are questions that I think we look forward to talking further about over the next, the next 30 days. All right, there's no other questions for now. I think we're good. Thank you so much for the presentation. Thank you to all of the staff for helping put this great update together this evening. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the proposed personnel ordinance updates. And Rafael Baptista will present this item.
All right, good evening commissioners. We'll wait for the presentation to be posted. We'll do the presentation and then we'll ask for a public hearing. So, good evening. Always a pleasure to talk to you all about the personnel ordinance. This is our second time coming to you all, so. So I always like to start by reminding, reminding everyone of why we are talking about the personnel ordinance. And I like to tell this story. The other day, I asked myself the question, as a full-time employee of Buncombe County, am I eligible for health insurance per the personnel ordinance? 36 references and seven pages later, I am relatively sure that I am eligible for health insurance. I am the Director of Strategy and Innovation. Part of my job is to understand policies for the county. If that is difficult for me to understand, that's a challenge. The personnel ordinance is outdated, it's long and conflicted itself. Our goal is to get to a place where we have a shorter, easier-to-read ordinance, policies that provide complete transparency to employees, that make us, allow us to do consistent HR operations and to create a one Buncombe approach to personnel management. So the process we've undertook is over a year ago, we started reviewing the personnel ordinance for conflicts and potential edits. We researched other organizations' personnel ordinance, looked at state statutes and federal laws. We identified potential changes to the personnel ordinance, started communicating those to the board and to our workforce. And ever since, we've been working in a systematic approach to update the personnel ordinance. We've been very intentional while bringing items to the board in a, in a matter of which of taking a third at a time. The idea being is when we do small, less amount of policies at one time, we do them better. We can have better focus. But from a transparency perspective, it is easier for you as the board to understand what we are proposing. It's easier for the public and our employees to understand what we're proposing when we're only talking about a small amount of policies versus 157 pages worth of documents, which is what the personnel ordinance was 100, a year ago. So we start in the fall, looking at the cost of living adjustment and some policies. Today, we'll be talking about the leave policy, compliance with federal and state legal statements, benefits policy, grant-funded positions, unemployment pay policy. This will not be a board-approved policy. This is a management-approved policy that will implement the pay study that you all will be talking about later in implementing it in practice, and a supplemental pay policy. At the end of this presentation, we will also be discussing our drug-free workplace and drug screening policy for employees. We anticipate coming to you later this summer with a policy on temporary employment. Then we hope to come to you to the final part as part of this update in the winter with a recruitment selection policy and employee relations policy, a position management policy, and a nice polished document that clearly tells you if you're eligible for health insurance. So what is at a high level changing with the policy? We're taking items from the ordinance, putting them standalone policies, providing supplemental pay and bilingual pay incentives to employees, creating greater clarity around employee compensation, benefits, and leave, and providing clarity on the benefits for grant-funded positions. So let's dig into the policies. The benefits policy is the first one. There is no actual changes to polit, to benefits being proposed as this. What we're doing is taking it out of the ordinance and putting in a standalone policy and updating the language to reflect changes in federal law since the personnel ordinance was the last updated several years ago. The leave policy is also being removed from the ordinance to a standalone policy. It creates greater clarity and consistency for how leave is calculated for employees who work 12 and 24-hour shifts. It creates clarity around bank holiday hours for those employees who do have to work on holidays, ensuring they're treated equitably and consistently. And we're proposing adding community service or volunteer leave for employees at 16 hours a year for them to serve in the community. We are updating the definition of relatives for the purposes of funeral leave to create a more consistent and easier-to-manage approach. And we are also proposing some changes to the ability of employee, to how employees convert annual leave and sell it off, suggesting now proposing that employees only be able to sell 40 hours a year after they have taken off five consecutive workdays of leave in the prior 12 months. This ensures that we're staying true to the definition of annual leave per the personnel ordinance, which is to take time off to recharge. Moving into grant-funded positions, this is creating clear clarity, creating a standalone policy. And the primary change here is that we will now require that whenever we apply for positions that will be grant-funded, that we ask the grantor to provide funding to pay for benefits for employees. Supplemental pay is a new proposed policy. It does take a couple items out of the ordinance, but the primary things within supplemental pay policy is creating a set consisting standard for on-call pay. Regardless of which department you work in within Buncombe County, there'll be one compensation approach for hours of your schedule to be on-call. We're establishing a bilingual pay system that will increase our ability to serve residents by ensuring that we have the ability to serve residents in different languages throughout the organization and not just in one department. We're creating consistent policy to mandate the way to determine how we calculate overtime and comp time to ensure that we're in full compliance with the Fair Labor Standards Act. And we're setting consistent shift differential approach for 24/7 operations. This means that for employees who work between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM in 24/7 operations, they'll receive the shift differential, making us more competitive for some of our hardest jobs to recruit for. I always like to go back to this slide of what is taken, taken out of the ordinance but remaining board-approved. Those would be your benefits, your grant-funded positions, your supplemental, supplemental pay, and your leave policies. So everything we've taken out of the ordinance will remain board-approved. We are adding a policy of employee pay, which will be management-approved, but this is a new policy and not anything that we are removing from the ordinance. So this is the last slide on the personnel ordinance component. Before I move on to the drug screening, are there any questions at this point? All right. All right, so drug screening policy. Just to provide some context, what is currently in the ordinance? It states that employees, individuals who apply for a job with us before we extend the final offer, they have to get drug tested. If they fail the drug test, we don't offer the position and they're ineligible for employment with Buncombe County for one year, regardless of where in the county they want to work. It prohibits drugs and alcohol in the workplace. It allows for reasonable cause, post-accident, and post-injury drug testing. It allows for random drug testing of employees. That being said, we have not done random drug testing in several years. So when reviewing this policy, we had a couple considerations in mind. One is that major national employers are moving away from random drug testing and applicant screening. Examples notably being including Amazon and Walmart in the last year. Research indicates that drug testing disproportionately affects people of color. It is difficult to detect drugs such as cocaine, heroin, and opioids with a drug test. Current policy only applies to employees in non-elected departments. And there are changing marijuana laws across the United States. Marijuana is fully legalized in 18 states in the District of Columbia. And medical marijuana is legalized in 37 states in the District of Columbia. So when drafting a draft policy for your all consideration, we had a couple of objectives that we kept in mind. Objective one is we want to serve as a model of inclusive hiring in the region. We want to position ourselves as a more equitable workforce. We want to increase our applicant pool in an incredibly difficult and competitive labor market while maintaining a drug-free workplace. So with that in mind, we have a draft policy for consideration. The first piece of it is saying that employees are not allowed to use drugs. They're not allowed to be under influence or possess drugs or alcohol while at work. This first section ensures that Buncombe County remains in compliance with the Drug-Free Workplace Act, which is a federal law. The second part of the draft policy relates to testing. There are two notable changes here. We are removing random drug testing and proposing a change in applicant drug testing. Suspicion-based, post-entry, and post-action drug testing do not change under the draft policy. With applicant drug testing, what we are suggesting now is that any position in which the ability to operate a vehicle or motorized equipment is essential to perform an essential function of the job, that position would be subject to drug testing upon offer of employment. And that is the policy that we have for your consideration. Before I move into recommended, recommended actions, are there any questions? All right, so we have three recommended actions tonight for you on the personnel ordinance. Recommended action number one is that you hold a public hearing on the personnel ordinance as required by the ordinance when reviewing it. We recommend that you approve the proposed changes to the personnel ordinance. And we recommend that the following policies be adopted. The leave policy, benefits policy, grant-funded employee position policy, drug screening policy, and supplemental pay policy. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Rafael. Commissioners, are there any questions at this time? Now we'll open the public hearing. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing on the personnel ordinance at 7:03 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak? Mr. Yolton?
I've got two questions. And on the first one, in the benefits policy, as I was reading this, when I got it, it talks about the policy is not consistent with federal, some federal laws, right? The policies that we have now are not really consistent with some federal laws. In other words, there's some problems that where you got to change them.
I'm going to defer to the county attorney on that question.
There was a statement in here, a question that said, you know, to be consistent with federal policy.
Said to remain consistent, sir.
Okay, it was remain, not make, okay? All right, I just want to be sure of that. The other is on, on the drug testing. I'm all for it, but is there any prescribed procedure for how you're going to test in terms of, okay, we're going to see anybody using drugs. We go out to do a test. Is there any, you got any procedure in mind? Are you going, I mean, I don't believe you want to tell everybody.
Sir, can I ask for a point of order?
Do you have a policy on how you're going to do that?
Okay, we'll, we'll make sure we answer your questions. Not right now, but when you're done.
Oh, you don't have the answer? Okay.
We, we will provide you an answer when you're finished with your public comment. All right, any other members, I'm going to ask first if any other members of the public have any questions or comments. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:05 PM. Would the staff like to provide any additional information in response to the questions that were asked?
Yes, so within the drug screening policy, there are prescribed procedures for how drug testing is done, both on the applicant side and suspicion-based. Happy to provide details.
Happy to provide details if you so wish.
Maybe just a a few high level.
Yeah.
How the procedure.
Yeah, of course, so generally the way it works is that we have to have other people within the workforce. That identified that employee appears to be under an influence. Once that it's on, human resources is called in, they check in with the employee. They certify that they believe that employee might be under the influence and then we do send them to a certified lab. To either get a breathalyzer test if we assume alcohol or a drug test if we're suspecting drugs. And there are set procedures to ensure that we're testing accurately and protecting employees' privacy and those elements.
And then what about for the uh the um essential positions where there is still a test required upon, you know, seeking a new position with the county?
So I'm gonna actually defer to our human resources department to answer that question. They're a little more qualified on that one than I am.
Sure.
Good evening. Uh, our current policy right now is um any applicant that is required to have testing. Um, they report to our testing site within 48 hours of us notifying that they will be um offered a position. And based on that, um, right now they're taking a urinalysis test and we're working with our vendor to have a follicle test. So that way it will pick up the um other opioids and heroin and cocaine and stuff.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, commissioners, any other questions? Alright, well, we've got um. The staff have recommended that we approve the proposed changes to the personnel ordinance.
Motion to approve, to amend the personnel ordinance.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And in terms of the other policies, those could be approved in a single motion. Okay.
I'll make a motion to adopt the benefits policy, drug fee work, drug free workplace policy, grant funded position policy, leave policy and supplemental pay policy.
Further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, thank you so much. Appreciate all the work that went into all of these updates. Alright, we come to the county manager's report.
Thank you, sir. I want to take a moment to salute our election services team and the 450 people who helped staff our polls this past Tuesday. As you know, Buncombe County voters showed up in record setting midterm primary numbers on May 17th. It totaled off 53,707 people voted in Buncombe Counties. 2022 midterm as, which is an increase of 20,000 people from the 2018 midterm. So more than 27,000 people voted early and more than 2,500 mail in ballots. We are proud to say that Buncombe County registered voters turned out 26.37%. Compared to the state 20% voter turnout. So just a point of pride for election services and I also want to thank. Our Buncombe County staff who volunteered to work at the polls along with our community members who heard the call to serve. That's a long day, the polls opening from 6:30 to 7:30 and you're there before and you're there after, so I just want to say thank you to them. And of course canvassing, it will happen on the 27th and we can have final results after that, but I wanted to lift that up. And then I'm, I'll ask Rachel Nygaard, if she would come forward, you have a short update on a homeless services consultant.
Good evening, commissioners. Rachel Nygaard here, your strategic partnerships director. I had planned to co-present this evening with Jennifer Teague. Who directs the Aging and Adult Services in Health and Human Services for Buncombe County and she's unable to be here this evening. I'll be giving you two updates. The first is the results of the homeless point in time count. Um, and the second is an update on the homeless services consultant. So point in time count is first, what is a point in time count? This is the way that our community and communities across the country um assess the volume of people who are homeless. And this happens on one evening in our community, it was on January 25th of 2022. And um it follows the federal, the housing and urban development or HUD criteria for what happens in a point in time count. It's led by the city of Asheville, who's the lead entity for our area's continuum of care. That's the HUD word for our our homeless service area. Our point in time count this year was a comprehensive count, including shelters, people who reside in transitional housing. As well as people who are unsheltered, living outside. And there were, there was a great community involvement this year, 16 teams participated, over 50 volunteers. That happened in January and it's now May. And since then, we've been going through our data verification process. These results were announced on May 10th to the city council. And um wanted to make sure that the Board of Commissioners had a similar opportunity to hear the update. So here's a snapshot of what the data show over the past few years. The key takeaway here is that while homelessness overall is up. Unsheltered homelessness is up significantly. Homelessness overall, year over year, from 2021 to 2022 is up 21%. It dipped a little bit the year before and is on the rise again to 637 total people who are, who are verified as being homeless on that evening. The number of unsheltered individuals more than doubled year over year and. More than tripled compared to pre pandemic levels. Unsheltered homelessness as a share of total homelessness has been on the rise over the past five years, as you can see on the grid. Rising from around 10% of our total homeless population to now um over 35% of our total homeless population. The point in time count has a lot more depth of data in it that I'm not bringing forward. But we do have and are analyzing information um like the demographics of people who are homeless. Their race, their gender, their ethnicity, age, status such as people who are veterans, people who are impacted by mental illness. Or substance use disorders, et cetera. So this is just a high level snapshot. We wanted to start here because it lays the foundation to where we're heading next. The reasons for the rise in unsheltered homelessness are complex. And it's not as easy as simply having available shelter beds to solve it. On any given night, including January 25th, when we had the point in time count, there were open shelter beds. We know that shelter capacity is down as a result of the pandemic and we're working with providers to try to make sure that they're getting their capacity built back up. And the reasons that people live unsheltered are sometimes about availability. Other reasons that that people reported in their point in time count surveys, that they might have been living outside. Or staying outsides, feelings of anxiety, feelings of safety, certain rules or restrictions at shelter providers or transitional programs. So it it's not, there's not one reason causing unsheltered homelessness. Um, and it's therefore difficult to find one easy solution. So we're getting together with other major institutional partners in our community to try to work on what can be done. Um, we've reported to you prior about this and wanted to come back and give you a status update. We, as Buncombe County, are working with city of Asheville. I mentioned before, they are our lead entity for homelessness. They are the recipient of federal um homelessness funding into our community. And Dogwood Health Trust, as we know, is a is a collaborative partner and funder. Our three organizations began um planning in January and issued an RFP or request for proposals for a homeless service consultant. That went out in February and the proposals came in in March. We had 11 proposals, really strong response from the field. And um we scored those, interviewed top firms and um this month announced a award of that RFP. The selected firm is the National Alliance to End Homelessness or NAEH. We're really excited about the expertise and perspective that this uh this firm will be bringing to the process. They're a nonprofit organization based out of Washington DC that works with communities across the state and country. With a focus on policy and research and um implementation of of programs. So the scope of their work is two parts. The first part is the needs assessment and the second part is the solution definition slash feasibility study. During the needs assessment, it is about the data. It's about um assessing the breadth and depth of available data. And it's also about engagement, working with stakeholders. So that means to us, people who work in the system as providers, people who experience homelessness themselves. People who live in neighborhoods or have businesses that are impacted by behaviors or things that occur. As a result of people living unsheltered. So a lot of listening, a lot of engagement, a lot of needs assessment, leading to some recommendations. So we are asking them to provide a written report as well as presentations to bodies like this one. So you'll hear from NAEH um in a few months um with some specific recommendations. And the recommendations are to include multiple options and um implementation plans and funding scenarios to accompany each recommendation. The work will occur through the 2022 calendar year. So the first half of the um, the first phase, the needs assessment phase is expected to be completed in September. And the second phase with the final deliverable is expected to be complete by the end of December. We'll keep you posted and work with you to schedule a time to hear back uh as the uh as the work of NAEH. And the homelessness collaborative continues.
Great, thank you, Rachel. Any questions, commissioners?
I have a quick question, Rachel. What type of success rate um does the organization have in terms of working with communities who are, you know, really battling a homeless challenge like we are?
I appreciate that question, Amanda, and one of the. Questions that we asked uh was about benchmarking and comparison to other communities and what other communities we might look to. Uh, that have, that have had solutions to what we're trying to work on. And um. What we heard in response is. Each community is unique and what we're experiencing is part of some trends that are happening nationally. So we are in it together with other communities. Um, there's not necessarily a success rate that we can turn to with our current set of issues and see. Where all of those issues have been solved. But they have the ability to link us to the best practices that are coming out of the federal agencies. And look across states, look across um cities and counties, um including our peers in North Carolina.
I guess one other question I have is um. You know, my sense is that, you know, working with the consultants can be looking at kind of a longer term plan, right? For how do we rest with these complex issues around homelessness? And um, but of course, the, you know, the point in time count with this big, big increase in the number of unsheltered. Uh homeless individuals in the communities concerning. And um. And so are there, are there additional conversations going on maybe separate from the consultant process around just looking at that, right? Because it's spring now, it's gonna be summer, fall, and then it's, and then it's gonna be winter again, right? And, you know, in six months. And so the particular concerns around the unshelter during the really cold parts of the year. If if those unsheltered numbers presumptively remain high, might even, you know, if that's a growing number, maybe it's even gonna be a bigger number. Are there other kind of more interim plans being thought about for what we can do to increase? The shelter capacity particularly during the winter months as we look, look ahead to the winter of, you know, this coming winter?
Indeed, our planning body is the Asheville Buncombe. H I A C, Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee. It's a city county appointed body and they have a team who's, who's working on code purple specifically, uh the cold weather sheltering. Understanding um. People living unsheltered create public health and public safety concerns community wide and really um specific. Health and safety concerns to those individuals themselves all year and in cold weather that it's exacerbated. So yes, um, I would expect co-investment in the availability of of shelter ramp up for the cold weather months.
Okay, well, as we move forward, I'd certainly appreciate sort of hearing more about, you know, those ideas and what the strategies are, what the options are. Uh, around that, um, so that hopefully we have some good community plans in place like well before we get into that.
Indeed.
That time of year, yeah. Alright, any other questions? Alright, thank you, Rachel, appreciate it. Thank you for the update. Avril, any other items?
Sir, that concludes my report.
Very good. Okay, old business. We have one item, introduction of bond orders and resolution setting a public hearing on the bond orders. Don Warren, the finance director, will explain this item.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. So as part of the ongoing requirements for the general obligation bond referendum, I need to introduce the bond orders to you. There is a bond order for $30 million for general obligation open space bonds. Uh, it's to raise money for the purposes described above in addition to fund any funds which may be available for such purposes. For any source of general litigation bond, yeah, sorry, general obligation open space bonds. The county are hereby authorized and shall be issued pursuant to the Local Government Finance Act of North Carolina. The maximum aggregate principal amount of such general obligation open space bonds authorized by this order shall be $30 million. Taxes will be levied in an amount sufficient to pay principal and interest on the general obligation bonds. That's the first one. The second one is for the affordable housing initiative. Uh, in order to raise money required for the purposes. Funds which may be made available for such purposes. Sorry, Robert, didn't mean to make it fall over. From any source, general obligation, general obligation housing bonds. The county are hereby authorized and shall be issued pursuant to the Local Government Finance Act of North Carolina. The maximum aggregate principal amount shall be $40 million. Taxes shall be levied in the amount sufficient to pay principal and interest on the general obligation bonds. Those needed to be read into the minutes so that we are fulfilling our requirements. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the bond orders if you have them.
See any for now.
Okay. Then the second item that I need is to set a public hearing uh for June 7th. To authorize uh the public hearing on both of these and then we will have a public hearing for the general obligation. Open space and the general obligation affordable housing bonds.
Is there a motion to set, to hold a public hearing on June 7th?
Correct.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, we come to new business. The first item is an analysis of the, of the fleet building complex lifecycle costs.
Good evening, Chairman Newman, Commissioners, great to see everyone tonight. As a brief reminder from the briefing we had a few weeks ago, we're building a new fleet and garage facility and general services facility. And back in October of 2020, which feels like a very long time ago, uh, we adopted a, a lead policy for the county. For new construction and major renovation. And essentially a part of that policy that we, we put in place was to do lifecycle cost analysis. And at certain decision points during the construction process, bring that information to the board to, to make certain decisions. And that's really about determining not just the upfront cost of certain measures to take, but the lifecycle cost. What's this gonna run us for, you know, the entirety of the, of the life of the building, right? So what we have tonight for you is sort of a pared down uh slide deck from last meeting. Scott Metcalf, who is our project manager from General Services is gonna run through this for you and what we're hoping. And what we're hoping tonight is that we'll get some guidance on the board's preference moving forward for some of these decisions.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman Newman, Commissioners. I want to thank Mike Penna with Clark Patterson and Lee for coming up. Uh, if there's any technical questions, he's, he's available. See if I can operate this thing. Thank you all for allowing us this time to present the lifecycle cost analysis for the general services fleet complex. First off, we're extremely excited to be the first building designed and built under the new high performance building resolution. Our new fleet services building will be located at 2945 Riverside Drive on land adjacent to the Buncombe County Indoor Firearms Training Facility. The general services fleet complex will be a multipurpose building supporting three separate use functions, each of which will be conditioned with a different type of HVAC system. The office area will utilize a variant refrigerant system with a energy recovery ventilator. The storage area will be heated and cooled with a ground mounted DX unit. And pending the outcome of our decision tonight, we'll use either natural gas or electric resistant heat strips for auxiliary heat during low ambient conditions. In the garage area, this is, this area becomes a little more challenging, uh, just due to the nature. And, um, in this area, we'll utilize electric resistance or gas fired air handling units with accompanied by ceiling mounted infrared heaters. Here we have the four options identifying upfront costs, operating cost, and a total 25 year lifecycle cost of each. Each of these four options meet the requirements of the high performance building resolution. You may notice that our numbers have changed since some, since the briefing. As recommended, in efforts to be more in line with the manufacturer's programs, uh, warranty programs, we have increased the lifecycle cost from a 20 year to a 25 year. Nate kind of used my tagline in his presentation, but this is, this slide is where I like to say the rubber meets the road. Here you can see over the 25 years, how much each system is going to cost and who you pay that cost to. The orange and light blue reflect, reflect the 25 year lifecycle cost. And the other colors reflect the infrastructure needed to support those items or those systems. The first two options have the highest lifecycle costs and total utility cost, while the remaining two options have a higher initial installation cost, but a lower lifecycle cost. For clarity, we use the same number of solar panels for each option, but our design team has been in contact with Duke Energy. And under the net metering agreement, we are allowed to produce one megawatt or our projected peak demand, uh, whichever is less. That being said, with the full electrification model, we would be able to install some additional panels. The 142 kilowatt system was designed to 90% of the natural gas option. With guidance today from Commissioners, we are excited to move forward with the county's first building under the high performance building resolution. Thank you for your time. And do you have any questions?
All right. Thanks, Scott. Commissioners, questions or comments? I mean, first off, I would just like to say, I really appreciate this analysis. I think this is such, uh, such, um, such a thoughtful way to approach a project, you know, in terms of just like so often with so many things we just look at, you know, what's the price tag to buy this thing off the shelf? And we don't think about, you know, we've got to operate this thing for decades to come. And it's really, so, you know, they're both important ways to look at it, the upfront costs, but, but, but even more importantly, what is that? What is that, that, um, real lifecycle cost to take, take it all in and look at all those numbers together? So really appreciate, really appreciate the approach on this as well as kind of looking at these different, um, technology, technology options for it. So. So, and I would, I guess, you know, I would, um, you know, I would support, um, obviously one of the, one of the two, uh, last two scenarios look most attractive on the lifecycle basis. And they're very close, uh, together. So, um, I would, I would support the full electrification scenario. And, um, if, you know, it's, it's, those, those two are very close, but I think the, you know, move, moving ahead, there, um, it's just more and more recognition of the benefits of going to an all electric system. The, the, the main one being, um, I mean, this will have solar panels on it, so it's great. We'll use electricity and we'll make it right there on site to power the building. But even for buildings where you don't necessarily do a solar or other renewable energy generation system on the building, you know, uh, with the legislation that passed the General Assembly last year, um, on a bipartisan basis, you know, with the support of the utilities, support of the environmental community, the renewable community. You know, it really commits the state to a transition to, uh, zero carbon, uh, future energy generation. So a big, a big shift towards overall renewable generation. So for buildings that are all electric, even if you don't have your own solar array, they're powering it. For the most part, increasingly, the grid itself will be powered by renewables, which means that building can be fully powered by renewables. So that's a really attractive option because if we, um, you know, if we locked into building gas powered systems, then basically it's going to have to continue to run off of gas for, you know, the, the whole lifecycle of that unless, unless we stepped in and paid to replace that, which we wouldn't want to do. So enabling our new facilities to be powered by renewables, ideally our own, but secondarily, just increasingly as the grid is, is driven by renewables is a really good place to be. So for those reasons, I, I support that, that option.
Yeah, I'll just jump on, on that bandwagon and say, you know, by, by 2050, we have to disconnect every building in, in the world essentially from the gas system and stop, stop using natural gas and methane, um, because of its climate impacts. And 13.2% of the US, uh, carbon emissions comes from buildings, heating and cooling mostly. And so I'm, yeah, again, really excited and happy to see this analysis, this thoughtful analysis. And, um, it's cool. We can think about this, this way. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments?
Pointing, uh, the three and four there, I mean, three, why does it not look better to go with three instead of four? Who would be the best to answer that? Toll or?
So it's essentially, it's, it's a question of whether or not we want to continue to use fossil fuel infrastructure to power our facilities. Or as, as Commissioner Newman just mentioned, would we rather move away from fossil fuels and go full, towards full electrification? Essentially, at this time, gas prices are still fairly low, although they're continuing to rise. And there is some instability in that gas market. And so long-term, while we look at those prices today and say that gas is a little bit cheaper, it is very difficult to predict that long-term. Whereas with some of the legislation that's passed at the state level, I think we have some, some guidance at the state level as to what's going to happen with our electrical grid over the next 10 to 15 years. So, uh, I think you'd be looking at a slightly reduced cost for natural gas today. Long-term though, it would be hard to say that that's going to remain consistent.
I guess, uh, question that I, I don't understand is with going, you know, fully, what about the cloudy days, the snowy days? I mean, will we have enough, do we not need that backup?
Yep. So it'll be, it'll be, the, the heating systems will be electrical, but it'll still be grid tied. So even though we've got solar panels on the array, uh, at nighttime or on days when it's raining or cloudy, we'll just procure that power from Duke. Right? So we'll still buy power from Duke, um, especially when the weather's not good or, or it's nighttime. So the solar will do a lot of the electricity, but we still can buy all the power we need from the grid for the, for the difference.
Yeah, this system would be what's referred to as behind the meter. And so, you know, it's still using Duke Energy's electricity, just offsetting it with whatever we can produce on site, which that 90% number-ish is, is sort of the average of what we expect throughout a given year.
Right. So it's not like the cabin out in the mountains where it's just off-grid, your solar's all you got and you use it when you have it. And, um, it, so we'll, uh, we'll both buy some power from Duke and then on really nice sunny days, we'll probably export some power back to Duke too.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Okay. I mean, it just, uh, what, $14,000 different is the difference between the two. So we're just banking that buying from Duke is cheaper than what we're projecting natural gas going to be and getting away from fossil fuel, right?
That's right. Any other questions or comments on this? Do y'all want, do y'all want a motion or just kind of looking for more, I mean?
We don't need a motion at this time. I guess what, just for clarity sake, are we moving towards full electrification with solar included upfront versus full electrification without solar included upfront?
Why don't we just do a motion? So just to be clear, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we support the, um, full electrification with the approximate 142 KW PV system on it.
Second.
Further discussion to give guidance on the lead design for the project. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thanks. Thanks. Appreciate y'all. All right. Next up is consideration of the FY 2023 Art Lester Highway Transit Extension Route 170 funding request and Matt Cable. And it's not Matt Cable.
I think all of you know, I am not mad.
Just reading off the script here.
That's right. Uh, he was unable to join us this evening. So, uh, for those of you who don't know, I'm William Hyde, the other half of the Community Development Division. I'm here to, uh, submit the request, uh, on behalf of the City of Asheville for, uh, rescension of funding for, um, our 5307, uh, federal dollars to support, uh, the WE1 route, which currently serves New Lester Highway. The board approved a similar, um, rescission, uh, a year ago for FY 22. And so the city is requesting the same again to, to support that route as well as the associated pair transit routes. In addition, they have made a request for funding for the Route 170, which runs from downtown Asheville to Black Mountain. And to support, uh, the, uh, areas of that route that are in the unincorporated, well, excuse me, that are not in the City of Asheville. And so, um, the total amount is $160,000 roughly, um, of, uh, again, grant funds that we would then just allow the city to use instead of us. I don't know if any of you have questions.
Just, uh, interested in what we've seen in the last year with that route extension?
So, uh, there actually has been relatively robust, um, daily ridership on that route. If you compare, for example, uh, the two, uh, ridership tables that we, um, supplied, the route extension, which is not very long, um, I, I would say two miles or less, has roughly 60 passengers a day, um, that are using it. As opposed to the Route 170, which is considerably longer and only has about 40% more, um, despite its much longer length. So, um, it, those route, particularly at the, um,
Can, can, can we stay on that? I just want to make sure I understand that correctly. Yeah. So, so, so for the whole route, am I hearing that right? So for the whole route, uh, 40% of the riders are picking up on the kind of extended part of the route? And then the other 60% is the balance? Or did I not understand it correctly?
No, sorry. I was comparing the WE1 to the left extension.
Okay, okay.
To the Route 170 of just that, in other words, just to show that the end of the WE1 actually has rather good ridership. And I don't believe there was any projections for what kind of ridership we would have, but, um, it, staff believes that it's a worthwhile investment and it's serving, um, the county well.
Also like to point out on the 170 route, we're, uh, seeing significant, uh, development of some affordable housing projects that are going to be coming online. Specifically the Jasmine Apartments. We already have East Haven online. Very happy to report that sidewalk and pedestrian infrastructure is now being installed in conjunction with Dogwood out there. And there was two bus shelters in Swanonoa. And there's another affordable housing, uh, development coming online through the community oriented development. We expect to see that trend to continue. Um, also to note on New Lester, we've talked before in the past about city doing some sidewalk extensions in unincorporated Buncombe County. And you hit a pretty density rich node when you hit that Mount Carmel loop, which is the end of that as well.
All right, Commissioners, is there a motion?
So, motion to rescind the 160,731 portion of the sub-allocated Federal Transit Administration Section 5307 program grant funds to support the WE1 route and Route 170 route for the period of July 1st, 2022 through July, June 30th, 2023.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much, Will. Thanks, Nick. All right. Next up, the employee compensation study. And Sharon Burke will present this item, which we've been talking about at several of our recent commission meetings.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. So I'm sure you have seen this slide once or twice before. And so I know I, I thanked the, the team. And when I say team, it was a really large team that actually helped us get to this point. It was a two-year project. And so, um, once again, I want to thank the folks in strategy innovation. I want to thank the entire, um, HR personnel. Um, we had a group of county employees that formed the compensation philosophy committee. They were part of the study, county leaders and all department heads had input on the findings. So once again, the work performed is we went out and we surveyed 16 different, um, locales, um, that were similar to us. And of those 16 agencies, 177 benchmark jobs were identified and reviewed. We looked at the materials, um, that they, the survey data that they brought forward to us. We compared it and, and analyzed the information by normalizing using, um, regional price parity. So we truly were looking at apples and apples. From there, we were able to create a salary grade structure using our compensable factor analysis. And what we did was we also, um, separated our exempt and non-exempt and created a separate salary structure for the IT department. Again, this is just one more view of what the compensation, uh, classification or compensable factors were, um, based upon. We looked at complexity, scope of knowledge, problem solving, contact with others, and then leadership. Based on those factors, we were able to put positions or classifications into certain grades. Then we started working on the salary analysis. And this is a, um, and a, a, a slide that shows how we actually were able to slot employees into the four quartiles over a 30-year spread. How we assigned those wages is that we looked at the years of experience above the minimum qualifications. So it's years of experience and education above the minimum qualifications. And then we use that data to plot that into the quartiles. Now I'm all the way over to quick facts. So quick facts, once again, we looked, or we reviewed 1,199 full and part-time regular employees. Of those 1,199, 649 employees were identified for salary changes and 550 were found that they didn't need a salary adjustment. Every regular full or part-time employee will earn at least a minimum of $17 an hour if approved. And the departments where we saw the lowest earners, they're seeing the greatest impact. So the budget impact, the compensation. So the budget impact, the compensation study identified the need to adjust employees' compensation or some employees' compensation to align with our new grades. And of those, or I should say, once again, that was 1,199 full and part-time employees that were reviewed during this process. And now to the recommendation slides. So we're requesting that you consider for approval that we adopt a living wage that would be a minimum of $17 an hour for all full-time and part-time regular employees, that you approve the new compensation model that uses compensable factors to assign proper grades for each county classification, you approve our new salary structures, you approve the salary adjustments for fiscal '22, and those changes can be absorbed within our current year budget with lapsed salary. And then these changes would be effective on the first pay period after adoption. So the next steps would be for the commission to consider a vote to approve, once again, the living wage, our compensation plan, and then providing the county manager the approval to adjust the salaries that were recommended. Any questions that I can answer for you?
I don't think so. Doesn't sound like it. Commissioners?
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to approve the new compensation plan recommendations and authorize the county manager to implement the compensation study recommendations effective May 21st, 2022, as well as approve the new living wage of 17 per hour for all full and part-time regular positions.
Second.
Further discussion? Just one question I had. So, you know, there was, and I think this was discussed in some of the earlier meetings, but since we're now voting on this, just to maybe revisit this point. In terms of the living wage policy, with Just Economics has identified, you know, an annual salary that needs to be, you know, achieved in order to meet the living wage standards for cost of housing. And I had a note in front of me and somehow I just lost it.
$17.70.
$17.70 an hour, but that's assuming a 2,000-hour work schedule over the course of the year. I think if you multiply those two numbers together, it's like $34,500, I think. So 35,400, sorry, 35,400, not 34,500, so 35,400. And so our policy is at $17 an hour, but we have, the county employees have a different number of hours that they work per year. And that's the reason that the 17 rather than the 17.70 was where the staff landed in terms of the base recommendation. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct.
Okay.
And we also added additional leave benefits over the last year that they don't have. Specifically, we have two weeks vacation. We just, you know, adopted a six-week paid family leave program. So we offer, you know, considerable more leave.
And if this is approved, and then we have, you know, we're going to approve our budget in June. And none of that's done until it's done. But the working assumption, as per, I think, the commission's feedback on this, is that we are going to, if we include the adjustments for inflation, that's likely going to be around a 4% or more than 4%, 4.6% adjustment. So that would be on top of the $17 an hour. So if that does go into place, in addition to meeting the living wage standard just by the number of the $35,400 salary that a person would make, I believe it would adjust it to like right around that $17.70 per hour, too. So $17.79, so we'd be above it. Great. Well, anyway, I just wanted to sound that out because we've gotten a few questions about that. So just wanted to make sure people are aware of how we arrived at those numbers and that we do feel like we're meeting that standard. And will, especially after the budget's approved. So any other questions? All right. Well, thank you. Thank you to everyone who's worked so hard on this. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you.
On behalf of Buncombe County employees, thank you.
We appreciate them very much. All right. The next item on the agenda is the land conservation goals that we talked about at the briefing meeting last week. And Commissioner Wells is going to tee us off on this item.
So let me get pulled up here. So basically, the recommended conservation goal is that Buncombe County will help initiate the conservation of 20% of the county's total acres by 2030. And I also just want to point out that currently we're at 18% of that acreage that is already protected in some way, whether through federal lands, conservation easements, various other ways. There's about a little over 1,400 acres that is in progress. So that leaves about 1.5%, which equals out to 6,036 acres needed to achieve this goal. I don't know. I don't, I'm not controlling it. There we go. Thank you. So there's basically that 6,036 acres is needed to reach that 20% goal for the county. And then also, that will be us working clearly with partners to help achieve this. And are there any, I mean, are there any questions? We talked about it last time, so I'm not sure if there's additional questions.
So the anticipated investment required to get to that goal, 6,030 acres, that's based on our existing conservation easement program, which is a pretty proven model.
Correct.
So if we scaled that up, then the $9.5 million now in 2030 is the anticipated amount needed. Basically, would that be able to get the construction?
Correct. So that would still be utilizing the funding that we've been doing through the program that's been very successful. And then looking at this potentially with the bond funding to be able to help us achieve this goal.
Commissioners, is there a motion to approve the recommended land conservation, 20% land conservation goal by 2030?
Motion to approve the resolution of conserving 20% of Buncombe County by 2030.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the resolution supporting reform of the Buncombe County Hotel occupancy tax in the 2020, and one of the things I want to do when we vote on this, so I want to make sure we're clear that this is a recommendation as it applies to the 2022 legislative short session of the General Assembly, which just started and will probably last anywhere from six weeks to three months. So, although you never know. So there's been a lot of discussion around this issue. You know, the short version is that in most communities across the state, the revenue generated by the hotel tax is split 66% for advertising and 33% for community infrastructure-type projects. But in Buncombe County, that ratio is 75% for advertising and just 25% for community infrastructure and other community priorities. So the resolution expresses our support for passage of a local bill so that it would increase the percentage of funding for community infrastructure, decrease the associated amount of funding for advertising. And our hope is that it would also create a bit more flexibility in how the non-advertising portion of the revenues could be invested. The current legislation is just highly prescriptive. And I think all the parties that have worked with this have noted that it would be beneficial if more, if there was more flexibility in exactly how those funds could be invested. Under the state law, those funds are invested by the Tourism Development Authority, although they take recommendations from the city council, the county commission, and other organizations can have input on that. But it would be to everyone's benefit if there was more flexibility in the different kinds of ways those funds could be invested. Like, for example, right now, funds have to be invested just in new capital projects. So you can go build something, which sometimes that's great. But when you build new infrastructure, you also have to maintain it. And the current legislation, you know, doesn't allow funds to be used to actually take care of our infrastructure. So things like that. And again, I would just note that I'll make a resolution, I'll make a motion to support this resolution. And just to, again, clarify, this is a resolution for the action that we are requesting the legislators take in the 2022 legislative short session. And we, I think, based on feedback from our legislative delegation, we've gotten feedback that there is a good likelihood that this could be adopted in this session. So we hope that's the case. So this is sort of a short-term, is there a short-term goal for this session? So I'll make that motion. Further discussion?
I guess I'll just make a comment. I'm happy and glad that this is kind of our short-term plan. It sounds like it's not the end of this conversation. And we'll continue to think about this more and fight for more later. And I guess I just reiterate that we've heard, we've heard about, we've been talking about this for what I believe is a decade now in terms of reforming this. And we've heard from even our own delegation, who's supposed to be advocating for us, that we can't have what some other community in the state doesn't already have. They're making a precedent argument. And I just, I guess I just can't, I can't think of a deliberative body on the planet less qualified to make an argument about precedent than the North Carolina General Assembly. They write whatever bills they want. They ignore precedent sometimes, and sometimes they follow it. They can do whatever they want. They write local bills about Buncombe County all the time. So I just encourage us to think about this more holistically and think about what it is we want and think about what the community would accept when we move beyond the short session into the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Parker. Further discussion? Yeah. And just to, you know, just to kind of note just how quickly things have changed around this. I mean, just over, it was less than 10 years ago that this entire revenue source generated far less than $10 million a year. You know, we're now on track for it to generate more than $30 million a year. So it's just, you know, it's just exploded in terms of the amount of revenue that's been generated here beyond what I think, you know, anybody anticipated it would be at just a few years ago. So it's a very important question. These are public tax dollars, right? So what is in the public's interest in terms of how those are invested in the future is really important to this community. So hopefully, we'll see this progress made, and hopefully, that'll lay the foundation for further progress in the future. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you all. All right, Commissioners, we come to board appointments. Do we have board appointments? Okay, we don't have any. Never mind. It's just written on my piece of paper here. All right, Commissioners, we have a couple of announcements to make. On June 7th at 3:00 p.m., the Commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326, in downtown Asheville. And on June 7th at 5:00 p.m., the Commissioners will hold the regular meeting at 200 College Street, in Room 326, in downtown Asheville. We do have a need for a closed session.
Chairman Newman, if I may interrupt real quickly.
Yes.
Can we discuss what we would like to do for July meetings? I think that was a request from a couple of the Commissioners, so.
Yes. So oftentimes, you know, we will approve our budget. We'll conclude our budget process with a vote at our second meeting in June. The first week of July, of course, is 4th of July weekend. So we oftentimes cancel the first meeting in July. So is that the question, is do we want to do that for this year? Yeah. So I'd suggest we keep the 19th and cancel the 5th.
I agree.
Anybody? Everybody good with that? Okay. All right. Do we need to make a motion to do that? I think it's a consensus. Do we need to vote on that?
No, we don't have to make a motion to do that.
Okay. All right. So I think by consensus, we're going to cancel the July 5th meeting. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Joyner. All right, Mr. Free, the purpose of the closed session?
Yes, sir. We'd like to request a motion to go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 318, 11A4 to discuss the possible location and development of an economic development matter. We're just seeking direction from the board.
All right. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. We're going into closed session. When we come back out, there'll be no further business this evening. We'll simply adjourn the meeting.